Good evening. I'm going to call to order the planning board meeting Thursday, August 24th. It's a couple of minutes after seven, but we begin every meeting with public comment. This is if you have anyone here has public comment on something that's not on the agenda. If you have things on the agenda, we'll get to those eventually, but if there's something other than what's on the agenda you like to make public comment on, now is the time to do that. I don't see any takers, okay? So for seven o'clock, we have the item minor amendment to site plan for Cumberland Farms at 53 Main Street Florence, map ID 17C-197 and 23A-77 to address underground utility conduit.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Philip Henry with Civil Design Group. We were the civil engineers of record last year when we got this project approved. I think it was back in last July. Since that time, we have been working with Cumberland Farms, the utilities and so on and so forth, and we're slowly inching closer towards construction, which is anticipated to begin within a month or so. During the process of understanding the utilities, particularly Electric Comcast and Verizon, we discovered that our site kind of acts as a hub for then branching off to the existing lots that surround us. So if you're familiar with the site, it's an odd-shaped lot and the utility lines come in through the back on the bike path via overhead. And then currently, they feed five adjacent lots via overhead. However, through the process of the construction, we always try to bring them underground now. So now all the utilities are going to be going underground. And in doing so, particularly along the westerly edge on the road that is looking at, Bratton Court, we are bringing utilities underground here. And what we learned is that we cannot have any landscaping or any physical obstructions within that utility area, which triggered a phone call to you guys to request a minor modification because we, if you recall, we had gotten part of our landscape plan, 14 arborvitae's approved on that westerly edge. Our modification, as I outlined in an email, we are requesting the removal of those proposed arborvitae's. Furthermore, there are also existing trees within that, what would be the utility area behind the Cumberland Farms, in between the adjacent area lots to our west, that would require the removal of those trees as well, which then furthermore triggered, I guess last year, right at the time when we filed, a significant tree ordinance was just passed as well. So as an addendum to our request for minor modification, Carolyn reminded me that we need to file or submit an addendum letter for those significant tree removals. So I included that in the packet. So we're here before you tonight to request the removal of those proposed 14 arborvitae's. If you're familiar with the site plan, I have it here. Unfortunately, there's no more space to put trees. We actually have trees within the right-of-way. And then furthermore, to request the removal of existing trees, as outlined in my letter. So that's why we're here tonight.
So just to clarify, it seems like this is triggering two very sensitive things for us as a board, which is one, the removal of existing trees, some of which are significant in the literal sense, not the figurative sense, and secondly, the elimination of trees that we're going to be putting in. So it seems like we're losing trees both ways.
Well, no, I think the, well, to clarify, yes, you're losing trees both ways, except that they were already planned to be removed. It just wasn't called out, they weren't called out specifically as the significant trees through your review. So it's not that that's changing. The site plan for that isn't changing, it just wasn't highlighted during the permit review. So really, the thing that's changing is that because of the utility being located underground, which is obviously beneficial for the, you know, you said, they won't be able to plant the trees they were planning to plant. And then they've just identified that they will need to do some kind of replacement to offset those trees. You guys already approved the site plan, but you just didn't get the list of the trees and all of that.
And because they're doing the, because they're requesting the arborvitae change, that triggered the other ordinance coming into play about the significant tree?
No, it's just an oversight. So just going over the plans again, you know, looking in that area, I realized that we never had the discussion. And so it's still an ordinance, it doesn't mean that you, that just because you didn't talk about it then means that they're exempt. It's just that we didn't get to it. So the only thing that's coming before you is a request for a minor amendment of the site plan to modify the landscaping in the back of the property. And there's still the proposed fence will still run along that edge. The arborvitae are going to be on the inside of the fence.
So there's no issue with abutters?
Yeah, it's just the, and I did, I mean, I did notify the immediate abutter on that side, just of this meeting, even though it's not a public hearing and it's not, well, at this point, I thought it was a minor amendment, so it would just, you guys have to approve that and make sure that you're comfortable, but it didn't rise from our perspective to the level of requiring a full-blown amendment.
I think it's also important to note that we are proposing to save the largest tree in that area, which straddles the property line between us and the abutter, which is I think about a 27 or 28-inch tree that casts a pretty wide canopy over those abutting areas. So one would argue that those arborvitae's would be in the shadow of that larger tree anyway.
And when we approved the original plan, were the replacement trees also on that plan for somewhere on that site or not yet?
No, the only, there are trees that were planned in the original plan, they're on the front. They're going to plant street trees on the front. So those can count towards the replacement?
Right.
But you all just didn't correlate, you know, those trees counting towards the replacement?
So there's no discrepancy in the calibrations or anything?
Right, right.
Replacing what is being taken?
Yeah, yeah. And then you, do you guys, I think I forwarded the mail, the email about the tollow tree. Do you have this? I printed extra copies if you want to see this letter. I'm sorry if you didn't get that. There's a few more. So that's the tree calculation.
Okay.
And I just will say that I haven't, I sent this to our tree warden just to verify the value. I haven't gotten a response back yet. I don't think, I'll double-check to see if that value makes sense. That's something we can work out. You guys don't have to approve the value. The way the ordinance is written is that it just has to, you know, they're pitching that, it may be okay, but I just haven't confirmed it yet with DPW.
Okay. A pitching, the applicant's pitching this or the?
No, the applicant is saying this is how much the value is for planting, the number that they're not going to be able to do on-site. So what their option in the ordinance allows for off-site payment to the city, for the city to put into the tree fund to plant.
Any other comments, questions?
Okay, this, it's a very limited site. Ultimately, it's going to be improved because the utilities are going underground. It's a shame we can't get the arborvitae's, but I don't think, I mean, the applicant's acting in good faith. And if we can't put the trees there, but we get money toward the general tree fund and we put trees somewhere else, I'm fine with it.
Does, oh, yes, sir.
Even though it may not be a book, is this available for public comment?
Yes, you can, if you just come up and identify yourself.
My name is Chris Kennedy. I am the abutter in the back that is going to be immediately affected by the change of the arborvitae. And I guess I'd like to know exactly what the changes are. Do you have any diagrams or plot plans or something that you can show? Because originally, in what is filed with the city and the planning department, I think there's about 11 or 12 trees. I just, and three of them were scheduled to stay, all of them significant. I just heard you say a tree. That means one tree. So that has changed from what the original plans that you submitted were?
Right.
And the tree that straddles really does straddle, so it's actually beneficial for you to leave it because it's going to be, would be a pain in the butt to take out that it straddles. So the second question is, what actually is going to replace the arborvitae and how is that going to affect the distance between property zones, property lines?
Carolyn, do you have a digital copy?
I just have, I do have a copy on my screen. I could probably put it up.
Because I have, I have one on my thumb drive, too.
Yeah, I'm just.
Before and after, you can have 11 if you want to share that.
Sure, I have 11 by 17 if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, if you can pop it on the, if you want to pop it on the thumb drive on there, just because that one's already, the screen's already connected and it would take probably less time to, it's on the upper right, over by where the lock is, I think.
Okay, so just bear with me here. So this is the subject area that we're discussing here, this area in the back. These are the 14 arborvitae's that prior to our in-depth conversations with National Grid Comcast and Verizon, we were proposing to implement and install. And then furthermore, there were existing trees here, which I don't think show it because of the hatch, but they're called out on the demo plan. Most of them were to be removed, and then we, but we were trying to save, I think, two or three trees. And then the existing largest tree here is where that mouse is, that's the one that straddles the property line that we think that we can save. So in discussions with the utility companies, I'll jump to the utility plan. As I was saying, the power lines come in from the north and they stay overhead and they feed the first two lots on two Bratton Court, and then they feed Mr. Fox's property in the back and Mr. Fox's property up front. So our, and our site and the existing Edward Jones building that we're purchasing. So our site acted as a hub and everything stayed above ground. As you'll see here in this area, right in here, that all the utilities that are serving the Bratton Court are going to be stretched right behind this building, including our electrical feed and our cable feed down here. So from here under, this is all underground, and as you can see here, we're running probably four or five four-inch lines here to feed the electrical telephone and cable. Not to mention that this box here is, it's an underground handhole box. It's a picture as a square manhole for access. So once we got to the easement stage with National Grid and Verizon and Comcast, the easement read that there should be no physical obstructions within that easement. So that's what triggered us calling, calling the city.
Where is, was the fence?
The fence is, it's probably tough to see on this plan, but the fence, we, is on the property line, it's actually on this plan. So this dashed thick black line, which is the property line, that fence is going to run on that property line from here where my mouse is, all the way down to the front of the property.
And what is the material? What kind of a fence is it?
It's going to be a six-foot-high white vinyl privacy fence. It's going to be completely opaque.
So the plantings would have been on the?
Site side.
On the inside?
On the inside, yep. So we're not, we're not removing the direct, or I would argue that we're not changing the immediate obstruction in front of the abutter's property, which would be that fence. So as you, and so before we approached the city, we looked at the site and we asked ourselves, where can we plant more trees? Unfortunately, there is, because of the uniqueness of the lot and the fact that there's no landscape separation between us and our abutters to the north and the west, there's physically no landscaped area to plant the trees. And where we do have landscape, which is along the front, we have that.
And how big and where are the trees that everybody thought were going to stay, except now they're not?
Where were they?
Well, where are they? They're still there.
The existing trees?
Yes, other than the one that's staying.
Yeah, they're in, they're in this area right here on the mouse, where my mouse is showing, right here.
And how big are these trees?
The existing ones? I mean, they range, I would think the largest ones are, well, I mean, we actually denote them, they're in excess, I think two or three are in excess of 20 inches. Some of them are eight inches, some of them are 12 inches.
I would have to dispute that fact.
Just one at a time and then I'll, thank you. Anything else for the?
No.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'd have to dispute the fact of the site.
I'm sorry, because of the recording, we have to have you. Thank you.
I'd like to dispute these sites of the trees because of being of interest to me, I went out and actually measured them, and almost all of them are over 21 inches. The smallest one is 21 inches. So we're looking at 12 or 14 trees that are 20 inches or more. These are big trees. Height-wise, they're probably as tall as a three-story building. So these are not just small bushes. These are large trees which make a major impact for coverage as well as aesthetics to my backyard. So I'd just like to clear that, if that makes a difference to you, that the diameters have been misrepresented. And you can always make a site visit if you like and measure them firsthand. The second thing is, for fencing, is that fence right on the property line or is that set off by a one-foot standard zoning request, that a fence not actually be on the line but be offset by one foot? Am I mistaken in that or?
We don't have a setback for fences.
Fence is none at all, so they can go right flat on the property line itself, okay? And where was the original fence going to be? Has that been moved at all?
No, the fence has not changed.
Okay, so it's exactly where it shows up?
If I could ask you to, this is really a conversation with us and not, so if you could address your questions to us and then we'll get you answers. So just, that's just the way it works. Thank you.
The fence is where it was.
Was.
Just the arborvitae aren't on the?
On the inside.
Site side.
On the site side, yeah.
Which they were always going to be on the site side.
Yeah, right. So that part really is, that's different than the trees.
Right, yeah, those are two different.
And I would just say two things. One, I think it would be, so I think, I don't know if Mr. Henry can elaborate, but I believe their landscape architect went out and confirmed the measurements taken at a specific height above grade. So there may be some differences there in terms of where you measure on the tree and what that number is. So that can certainly be confirmed by the tree warden, but their landscape architect gave the numbers as far as I know. And then in terms of the exist, the tree that will remain, I think it would be important to, as a condition of this, that the tree protection measures be inspected by the city before any construction starts, because that will be an issue, that could be an issue during construction if the protection area is not adequate enough.
Is it within our purview to also condition the tree warden's site visit to confirm measurements or is that something that we normally don't do?
You can't direct some city staff to do certain things. You could, you know, you could request that a plan be stamped, that submitted and stamped by the landscape architect indicating what the measurement is, because, you know, we rely on the stamp. I don't have a stamped plan, I just, the, yeah, right. So we could certainly have a stamped plan submitted to show what that measurement is.
Can those trees be put on the abutter's property? The new part of these $12,960 abutters trees?
Arborvitae?
No, the replacement.
The replacement trees.
Oh.
It seems like that's part of, I mean, I.
You can't, you can't regulate that, you can't tell them to do that. If they want to make a site agreement, they can. But what's in front of you is what the applicant has.
Got it.
But to follow with Sam's question, would the applicant, could, would they get credit towards this $12,000?
Yes, yes.
If they make, if they worked out of a mutually beneficial agreement and that, so it's not, they're not getting gubbed double.
Right.
So they would get credit for it.
They could do it, but you can't tell them.
I understand. I'm saying, in the spirit of a wonderful city of North Hampton, it seems like everyone here could look at each other and say, hey, let's have some coffee and work out an agreement.
Because it wouldn't cost them any more.
That's what I'm saying.
I just have questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What was the tree protection measure? What does that entail? Because if they're excavating around the area and they lob off half of the tree's feeding roots, that's really going to be long-term detrimental to the tree. So can you people spell out to me exactly what the tree protection measures are and does that take into the effect that not to destroy the root system for this one major tree that apparently is the only tree that's staying?
The tree protection measures are standardized, we rely on a standard that's published, and it depends on the tree. So I can't tell you what the space would be for this tree, but what does happen is developer has to follow the criteria in this published standard, then the city checks it to make sure it makes sense. Some root pruning is fine and can be done sensitively without hurting the tree. So it's not that no root pruning would happen, but it has to be done in accordance with published standards for protecting trees.
Is there an ordinance number or something that goes with those printed standards that I could access?
It's not a city ordinance, but it's, if you want to find out, I mean, it's referenced in the city's ordinance, the protection, so you can go in the section 12.3 of our ordinance, and it references this other ANSI standard that you can try to look up.
And that's a government standard, either state or federal? And that's a government standard, either state or federal, or that's a trade?
No, it's, it's like a third party, yeah. It's this, it's a whole group of standards that are sort of, that range the, from, it's not just about tree protection, but it's, you know, all sorts of.
Best practices.
Yeah.
And you said that, just on that point, you said that we could create a condition that the tree protections measures be inspected.
Prior to construction.
Prior to, to make sure that whatever the standards, that they are being.
Right.
Okay.
The second question I had, you measured that there was a standard height from which the tree warden would measure from the ground? Do you know what that height is? Because I measured it at about waist height or about chest height.
Yeah, I mean, it's diameter breast height, it's about five feet above grade.
Okay. Then my original, my original statement stands then. There are, the majority of the trees are over 21 inches diameter, decisively over 21 inches in diameter. So perhaps tree warden can come out or something. Whoever made that original estimate could actually come out and take another look at it with the property owner there this time. And I'd gladly make myself available to meet him there. Because there seems to be a major discrepancy in how the trees are measured and what the sizes are that are coming out. It's an important issue for me, so I'd like to see it brought.
And could, and could the condition of a stamped plan address that, that we, you know, that it, someone needs to professionally put on there that this is what, and that would address? Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think, so I measured the trees, so I'm, I'm a professional engineer, so I'm not a landscaped architect, but I think, I think I could measure a tree. So it was, it was my understanding that, you know, we measure it at breast height, but it is what it is, right? So it, there's one right answer, so we can all collectively go on site. So this was my interpretation of the right answer, but if somebody else doesn't, we want to get it right. So we're not here to, to, to do something that, we're here in good faith. We want to make sure we can proceed with this project. That's our goal.
So if it, so basically what happens is, you know, let's say one is 19, one is 23 inches, you know, whatever it is the ordinance says, you're replacing for that. So if it's 23 instead of 21 inches, then they have to do two more inches of replacement.
Right. And, but I do think, and I appreciate your comment, I think that, you know, these two measures, if, if we were to have conditions, I'm not telling folks what to do, I think would bring some, some confidence and some resolution to the Butters, that, hey, everything, we've gone by the book, everything has been done that can be done, and, you know, and you've stated that, you know, you intend to do that in good faith. So I think it's just, it's a, it would be a nice reassurance and, and give everybody feeling like, okay, everything's being done that can be done, and we're following all the guidelines.
Is this something that's going to be official and signed off on, or?
If we make it, if we make it a.
You're just going to go up and we're going out and measure trees and have a nice day?
No, if we make a condition, then it has to be before they would be able to do construction.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it would, it would be, it would be a condition from, for the permit.
Okay.
So, I didn't overstate that, did I? Okay.
Is there going to be any noise factor or anything from the change in the way that being underground, has it put transformers or anything going to change, or the volume of current that it's going to deal with? Is there going to be issues, any noise issues that are going to change as a result of the cables going, being buried? One would think not, but I'm.
I would think not, but you have clearly asked a question that is beyond my expertise, but I would think not. You know, in fact, I would think it would be better, but, you know, so, from that standpoint.
Okay.
So, okay. Any other questions?
Not that I can think of immediately.
Okay. We get that a lot. Okay. Any other questions on the board? Would anyone?
Close public comment?
Second, all in favor? Okay. Any discussion or suggestions? And we've already had a little bit. Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve minor amendment to site plan for Cumberland Farms at 53 Main Street Florence, map ID 17C-197, to address underground utility conduit with the following two conditions. First, that tree protection measures be inspected before construction begins. And the second, that a stamped plan containing tree measurements be submitted prior to construction.
Second?
Sir?
Mark? All in favor?
Yep.
All opposed? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you both for your civil discourse.
If I may, just, just one unrelated topic. I had, I had dropped off the A and R law consolidation.
Oh.
So I'm, this is just in, so I just need a vote for the endorsement of this A and R. They're just going to merge the two lots that we're purchasing.
Oh, yeah.
They're not quite ready to have it signed, but since they're here now and we have a plan, just wanted to get your vote on that.
Motion to endorse A and R.
Second by Ann. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
The next item is a request for 40R approval by Valley Community Development Corporation for renovation to 15 units and additional, addition of 16 units at 82 Bridge Street, Northampton, map ID 13, 32A-178. And do we have a presentation? I guess.
Hi, good evening. My name's Laura Baker. I am the real estate project manager at Valley CDC. My understanding is we'll do as brief of an introductory presentation as we can, and then, of course, take your questions. This is a front view of the property. It's located at 82 Bridge Street. It is a walk-to-town location, close to the bus stop, in front of the post office, and it's about a half-acre parcel of land. These are just some photographs of the existing building, the, starting at the top left with the view kind of facing the driveway, and then deeper into the driveway, the kind of back building and garage, front of the building again, and then around the backside with the fire escape. These are just a few highlights of the existing conditions. The house was constructed, we believe, in 1820. It is a contributing structure in the Palmeri Terrace Historic District. It serves, has served since 1990 as a 15-room, 15-room, single-room occupancy slash lodging house. It means that people basically rent a bedroom. There's a shared, one shared kitchen and four shared bathrooms. The building is very tired and in need of both structural and capital repairs. It currently has no handicapped accessibility to any level of the building. Some of the rooms are teeny, under 120 square feet, and it has generally been occupied by low-income, single adults. Some highlights of existing conditions, again, the fact that there's not handicapped access in the building, and a few, you know, photos of some structural issues that are, that are apparent in the building. The purpose of this project is legion. We're going to hopefully address the current capital needs and correct any safety defects that are there in the building. We are planning to install an elevator that would give access to all the different living levels of the building, and create three fully handicapped accessible units, get rid of the small teeny rooms, and the average room size will increase to 250 square feet, install a kitchenette and bathroom within each unit. So they're turning really from a lodging house to kind of efficiency apartments. Reserve up to 25% of the total units. We're thinking eight units for homeless applicants, include some services. Reserve two units for Department of Mental Health referrals. Serve tenants at a range of income levels, but with an emphasis on extremely low-income tenants, and you see the breakdown of different income tiers that we would try to achieve in the property. And undertake historic restoration of the main house. So this is the architect's rendering of what the addition would look like. We couldn't get a lot of angles on what the addition would look like to the public because it's only from standing at one very specific angle that you would see the addition at all. Part of the goal of this was actually to tuck it behind the historic house so it doesn't present on the streetscape. But if you stand just right and look down the driveway, you can, you can see the addition in the back. This is a view of what that addition would look like if you were in the kind of garden area behind the buildings at the historic Northampton campus, kind of looking over behind other properties. This is a photo showing what this house looked like, we believe around 1950. And it kind of captures some of the things we hope to achieve in terms of restoring the front of the building. So at some point, somebody put this kind of wide aluminum siding over the original clavards, the clavards you're seeing there. We'd like to strip that and put hardy panel clavards that will look just like old clavards back. When they did the aluminum siding, they stripped those decorative caps, those little kind of ledgers that are over the windows were taken off. We'd like to restore those. Replace the existing vinyl two-over-two windows with fiberglass six-over-six windows. That was a suggestion that came from the Historic Commission. And then reinstall or replicate existing exterior trim. There's some kind of nice upper trim, Soffa and Fasha trim, that's pretty rotted, so it might have to get reproduced. And I'm going to turn it over to Carlos from Berkshire Design Group. He'll take you through the next couple of site-related slides.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Carlos Nieto. I'm a landscape architect with the Berkshire Design Group. I've been working with Laura Baker and Valley CDC for this project and the site aspect of the project. This is just a quick graphic, just getting us a little bit more to know where the site is. And the blue ring around it is our 300-foot from the property line, so it would be the area of the Butters that would have been, you know, told that the project was going to happen. So I always like to get a sense of what the, where the project is and what the size of that ring looks like in real life. As you can see, the, the project location is right in center of that, that circle, and then to the north, you got the first tree school, and then Bridge Street right in front of it, and then the Historic Northampton, and also the next house over to the west, and then to the east, one all there in the Butters. And then across the street, you have several other buildings, including what used to be the, the most, I believe, or that, that, those longer structures. I just wanted to make sure you, you got yourself located where we are. This is an existing conditions and demolition plan for the site. As Laura mentioned, this is the existing house on our site. It's a pretty narrow, narrow site, and also small. There are several to achieve the, and I'm going to just jump quickly here, this is what we're proposing. So the expansion of the building, to achieve that expansion of the building, there are several trees that will have to be taken down, and also for the stormwater management for the site, and also for the new driveway or extended driveway and parking area. Of those, there are going to be, I believe, four that are significant trees. We've notified, planning on what those trees are, what the DBH is, and at this point, we're planning on, on paying the city for, for those trees. Because really on the site, as you will see in the next slide, we, we have very little space to actually plant the number of trees that we would need. So I'm going to run you from the front of the property all the way to the back. So in the improvements that we are proposing, site-wise, we are improving the sidewalk in front of the building, which was a request, and also it is in not the best shape, but it was a request also from DPW. So we are going to be, we're proposing, we're going to be fixing that sidewalk right in front of the property. There's going to be a picket fence, very similar to the picket fence that we had on the historic. So we are adding a picket fence so that the streetscape keeps going, continues as you keep going. Let me just go. So that will be the treatment on the front of the building. The existing walkway that goes to the main entrance to the building will be, right now, it's also asphalt and it's not in good shape, so we're proposing a, changing that to concrete, as well as connecting, having a new connection to the parking lot on the back. So there's a walkway that would lead you from the front entrance to the back where the parking lot is. And the idea is that, so people are not necessarily walking down the driveway. Again, there's this, the pinkish or purplish color, that's what's going to be, remain of the existing building that we have, and everything behind that, that's going to be the addition. Some of it, as you saw before, is going to be demoed. So some of this area on the back on the original building are going to be demoed and it's going to be rebuilt. As we keep moving back to the north side, there's going to be a deck that will be accessed from the first floor. And as we, again, keep moving back, on the existing driveway, which used to end right about where my mouse is and that line is, and I wanted to make sure that you understood how, you know, what that, what that was and what it's going to be now. There's going to be an extension of the driveway, an extension of the parking spaces to accommodate for the increased apartments in, in the site. And then all the way to the back, we will have a trash receptacle area, which will have a screen, wood screen, six-foot wood screen around it, and then a bicycle shed for about 20 bikes. That's what we're proposing on the back end of, of the property. In addition to that, I'm, we are going to keep an area of, of open space. This rectangle that you're seeing, and I wanted to point that out, is the area where we're going to have our infiltration area for the stormwater management, and that's one of the reasons why we have to take down some of the trees. And because of having that infrastructure there, we can't really plant trees on top of it. That would defeat the purpose of the, it could clog in the drainage system. So what we are proposing, and I believe originally, there's been some revisions to the plan, the original plan that you saw, and some changes. As of right now, we are, we are proposing to, to plant two additional trees. These are emalankiers, service berries, so they're not going to be huge trees. And one of the problems that we were, we have in the site is that the, the trees were very, 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 very big for the site itself. So coming back and planting some trees that are going to be the right size for the site. I believe that's, there are existing, you know, large trees are going to be, are there to be, to remain, and a part of the way that we are grading the driveway and what we're proposing is that we are just going to be underneath that root system, we're just going to be removing the asphalt and leaving as much as we can the sub base, and then paving on top of that so to minimize the disturbance on the roots. In addition to that, as you've probably read, as one of the things, we will need an arborist to come in also and do some recommendations on how to prevent any root damage or damage on those trees, and that's part of the things that we're proposing to do. And the back, right next to the deck, we are proposing a line of about 10 to, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, eight, sorry, screening trees or arbiviti that are, we are going to be using to screen that deck that we're going to have out on the site. This is just a quick look. Utility-wise, the major utilities that we're going to be adding here is a drainage system because of the increase of the, of the pavement and the fact that before, basically, the water was just draining and not, there was no catch basin or anything in the parking lot, so we're improving the parking lot that way. That drainage system will also collect some water from the yard and also the water from the downspouts in the, in the building. As a requirement for the addition, there's going to be a replacement of the water line, so it's going to be increased in size for the domestic water line. The fire suppression system water line that exists is sufficient, so we're not touching that one. But also the sewer line is also going to be increased, and we've been in conversations with DPW to coordinate that. And the last, as of a couple of days ago, basically, they, their response was that it was okay, they will require us to have a new sewer manhole, which we're, we've agreed with. And the idea is that there are, the two manholes for the sewer system are very far away from this location, so it will be good for us and for the city to have a new manhole there. So utility-wise, that is the, that is the majority of the utilities, and my understanding is that gas and other lines are going to be reused or they're going to be evaluated by the gas companies and just to make sure that everything works. And so that is our utility plan. And I will leave it to Laura to go over more of the architecture and the changes within the building.
Thank you, Carlos. So this is a demo plan. Carlos pretty well covered it. You know, the, the plan is to preserve that kind of main four-square part of the building. And then it had kind of a little back building that's coming down, and it has three funky garages that are coming down, and that's kind of what that's attempting to show. This is the floor plan for the first floor. Again, the, the main part of the building, which is facing Bridge Street, is very four-square. Those are existing rooms that'll stay. Kitchen, kitchenette and baths will be added. The middle section is intended to be a common area for use by tenants. The elevator is set up so that you can come on at grade, because the first floor is because the first floor is, you know, I don't know, 30 inches up. So no ramp, hopefully, for this building. So you come in into a little lobby off the elevator and you can go to the right, go back to the original part of the building or to the left into the new addition. And then the upper floors are all residential. Again, the pattern repeats in the main building. That connector building has two rooms and, you know, they just kind of stack in the new addition. The large corner apartment in the addition is the handicap unit and it'll stack. So there'll be three of those, one on each floor. And then the upper floor, what's happening now in the main building is we actually have four tenants living on the, what's essentially the attic of the building. And that's where we're getting some of those really undersized rooms and, you know, not good heat and things like that. So we're going to, we're going to actually reduce the number of units in the old part of the building because there will only be two up there on the third floor. These are elevations. We're showing the front of the building. Again, the attempt has been to really tuck that new addition behind it. And even though it's kind of sticking out on the side, it's about 100 feet back. So it's set, set pretty far back on the lot. And the lot is narrow, so we don't think you're going to, unless you're looking for it, that you're necessarily going to be struck by it as you're either driving or walking by. And then you're seeing the backside, which is a little bit more modern-looking. And this is the side that would be facing away from the driveway? No, this is, yeah, away from the driveway. And then that's the side that would be facing the driveway with kind of a little side porch that we're rebuilding. And that's it for that.
Questions from the board?
First, quick question, easy one. Has the stormwater been reviewed by, or signed off by DPW?
Yes, so the DPW gave a series of comments. We got them today. They don't have a separate stormwater permit because it's less than an acre. But they're, they have approved the plans for managing the stormwater and then have recommended a series of conditions related to finalizing that and finalizing the maintenance agreements prior to construction.
So I can go through, whenever you're ready, we can read through this.
And I'm sorry, I just, I forgot, I skipped over. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on this particular project?
Well, thank you. My name is Miriam Moss and I live at 5 Aspen Lane in Northampton. I've lived here for five years from Philadelphia suburb. And I was struck, as I moved here, about the fact that it seems that there is not very much inexpensive housing for older, middle-aged and younger people here. And I'm very pleased to be here just in support of this particular project. It seems like it's hard to find things that are wrong with it in the general sense. The general sense being that, look, it's already there. It works there. It's going to be much better. Twice as many people are going to be there. It's going to have accessibility within. It's going to have not these tiny 10-by-12 or 10-by-whatever-they-are rooms. They're going to be real living spaces. And it seems that the people who live there, from my understanding, but that's all I know is from hearsay, is that no one has raised problems about, from it, from the tenants. And I'm not convinced that it would be likely, given the description that you've been given, that it would be uncomfortable for people who live adjacent to it, or as you call it, a butting. So I'm just very impressed by the first conversation that went on with the other proposal up in other part of the city. But I'm really impressed by the fact that I've always been involved in environmental things. And this is really environmental stuff in action, where you're concerned about trees, you're concerned about water, and everybody has been really responsible and thinking about it. So I urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Madeline Blanchett and I live at 41 Valley Street and I'm actually a Northampton native. And I'm here in support of the project. I actually am on the board of Valley CDC. I became a volunteer in the last couple of years because I saw the positive impact that they were having on my Ward Three neighborhood. So I just wanted to say a couple of things, just that I have spoken extensively to my neighbors about this plan. I used to be the vice president of the Ward Three Neighborhood Association, so I'm not speaking for them. But I'm just trying to give you a sense that I'm quite well-networked and I actually attended the open meeting that Valley CDC had at Bridge Street School and where, you know, it was really, I think it was publicized through the Ward Three Neighborhood Association. And, you know, people are just very positive about the project. They are very grateful that Valley CDC is, you know, doing such a high-end project in terms of actually the front of the house will be more historic. It's actually going to be more in keeping with the historic district that has formed at Palmroy Terrace and of course, Historic Northampton, which is kind of a gem for the whole community. So anyway, I just wanted to say that the buzz in the neighborhood is, you know, very positive about the project. People who live in the neighborhood know that, as been alluded to, that the Shaw's Motel, that there was a lot of single units there. And that then above, is it Augie's, is that what is now the antique store, that that also used to be able to house some of our lowest-earning community members and those units are all gone. So, you know, that's something that is really concerning. So I would say that, to me, that this is sort of reflects the best of Northampton values, where the design is thoughtful, where it promotes economic justice, and it's also, you know, really reaches up and blends in with the best of the aesthetics of the neighborhood. So I really hope you'll support it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jay Adams and I resident in Northampton, 60 Norwood Avenue, up in Bay State. But I grew up in this town and that neighborhood has always historically been a neighborhood that was pretty densely developed. It actually used to house a lot more single-room occupancy. But over time, things have changed and it's a real delight to see that use going more intensively back into the neighborhood, particularly the historic character that the CDC, CDC is going to restore. And, but I think that the whole project is great for the neighborhood, great and great for the community and really responds to the needs of that income range that really needs affordable, small units in downtown and not so heavily reliant on having a car to be able to live in this community. I also want to say about the critical importance about the handicap accessibility. Last summer, at the tail end of the Northampton Lodging House Live, I was actually the night manager on a couple of nights. And I know the population pretty well and I just wanted to say that expanding easily-accessible units to folks is so critically important. So I really appreciate Northampton giving this good consideration. I think it's a great project, great for the neighborhood and great for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, comments from the board?
Could someone explain just roughly the traffic mitigation slash parking slash bus plan slash, you know, exists?
So because the project is adding units, residential units by zoning, need to address and other projects to, need to address their incremental impacts of traffic. So the, we've had, staff has had a discussion with the applicant, how they could do that. They have shown, so the zoning sort of predicts based on study about how many trips are made by different users. So there's not a specific SRO use classification in the ITE or any, you know, other guidance. So what we look at is, was the multifamily trip generation assumptions. And we also know, we, there was information provided by Valley CDC about the population that they serve, how many cars are actually owned by their clients. And try to work and provide a workable solution that makes sense for actually the number of automobile trips that are being generated, given the population. So we also have a provision in the ordinance that sort of, just like what the staff memo reflected in terms of accommodating the different type of population, already in the zoning, we have a reduction in parking required for housing classification for people who don't typically drive. So it could be older residents who might not have cars or people who just can't afford them or don't want to afford them. So using that as helping the formula to think about in terms of traffic mitigation, we came up with a calculation, I guess jointly, I think that was agreeable with Valley CDC, about using that to sort of have the, what would typically be a standard for trip generation for residential units.
I did say something, I'm going to, I think I was reading in the application that only half of the existing blocks they use, I mean, half of the stalls they have have not been occupied. So it's a way that tends that, right, I mean...
Right. So, so I think that, you know, that confirms, and it's not sort of, we're not pulling this out of cloth, I guess, is on the way to say it. So, and then the other piece of it, so I think I'm just pulling out the numbers because I didn't have them off the top of my head. And I don't know if Laura, you wanted to speak to that, but...
Yeah, the other part of the question I heard is, you know, so the bus pass, bike share thing. What we talked about was, you know, that property management would set up a fund using those, I think it was $8,000, that could subsidize tenants to buy bus passes or bike shares. And I think the idea is to just spend it till it's gone. I think it could last a while.
Right, a one-time, yeah. So, so that's, I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, and I think that's a novel solution. I'm just thinking for the board, how is that, how do you enforce something like that? How do you, how do you know that's actually happening? How do you know?
So my, I...
Paying a fine that goes, not a fine, a fee. That goes to the city that's used for something, it's specific. And this, I think it's great, but I just don't know.
So, I mean, what I suggested as a possible condition to get at that, because, you know, it is new and we haven't really done this before. However, you know, if it's successful, I think it might be helpful and particularly in supporting, you know, our burgeoning bike share program. As to have a specific condition that states that, you know, before they go to certificate of occupancy, they have to show proof that they've made, they've purchased, you know, bus passes or that they've purchased whatever that, if it's bus pass or bike share. So then you have the receipts for the fact that they bought these and then when you give them to their tenants or offer them to their tenants. And then we'll see the value of that.
Do we have bike share in place yet, though? You know, we don't have a...
Today's Thursday. Tomorrow, we are paying a vendor.
So then it would be some, someone would just have to decide what portion of that $8,000 would be spent on bike share membership versus transit pass. And then kind of dole it out to the tenants as... Right.
Right, so what, or you could buy certain, so let's take bike share for example. That's, we're hoping will be up and running next summer. And we'll know how much those passes are going to cost. So, you know, and there'll be annual memberships. So they could buy X number of passes at that value and then they're purchased so that, I don't know if that, does that answer you?
No, that makes sense. I mean, my one follow-up question. So in the SRO model, is it, is it a lease? Like is someone expecting to be there for a year or is it a month-to-month situation or, you know?
Typically tenants will sign a year lease.
Okay.
And when we look at this particular SRO building, we, it's a pretty big range of...
You have some people that have been there for years.
Somebody's been there about 20 years. Every time I see, tells me it's about to...
No, it's not.
Month at a time and then someone moving on and...
But then there are plenty of people for whom this is kind of the bottom rung of the housing ladder. They're coming out of a bad situation, divorce, detox, something. And they're, this is their safe harbor. And then their goal is, you know, six months, eight months, a year to actually move into, you know, a real apartment, a larger apartment. So, you know, once these become efficiencies, we may see the bell curve maybe that people stay a little bit longer because it's a more livable situation.
So annual membership would work for someone's housing situation, I think.
And the only part of that would be low income? Or how does that work? I think I was reading here, how many units would be dedicated for the compromise of the low income? Or there's something like that. What is it?
So what we're, what we're hoping, and this is, this is predicated on raising gobs of money from state and federal sources, but that 16 of these units would be targeted to people earning 30% of the area median income or less. And that's kind of your lowest standard. And we'd be looking to have subsidy, rental subsidies in those units. So if you moved in and you made, you know, $1,000 a month, you'd be looking to pay a third of that for rent. For the balance of the units, we were looking at a mix of 50% restricted and 60% restricted units. So it's a range, but it's all pretty much on the lower end of...
So utilizing the standard federal model of 30% for housing and...
Yep, HUD calculates that it changes every year what that number is. And it floats with the median income, which in the case of Northampton tends to be a little lower than you might think because you're in the Springfield MSA, so it's not just Northampton.
Just to follow up on the bus, bike sharing program, just playing devil's advocate. The worst thing, I think, if we said a condition was before occupancy, you've got to show that you've, making this up, bought 10 bus passes. And so we have proof. Here's the receipt. Well, the worst thing would be have 10 annual memberships for a bus pass and only have five tenants who are going to use it. And then you're wasting, that would be the worst thing that could happen. So how, how could you structure it so that they're only given out to people who are actually going to use them, when they're going to use them, so they don't waste money? So you get the most benefit from it, but then it gets convoluted how to enforce it. And I'm not sure...
I feel confident we can work with the city to meet the objectives, that we can put some kind of checks and balances in place. The city's going to have a deed restriction. We're going to be doing some reporting. So I think there are a number of ways to...
I don't, I don't question that. I'm just, I'm wondering, as a, as a, as a board, how do we make that a condition that it's going to be effectively managed?
Yeah, and I, I would add another, I guess devil's advocate question, which would be, which would be if someone were to appear before us and say, be in that circumstance with the traffic mitigation, they, could they come back and say, well, you did this kind of temporary or, you know, thing that disappears, so to speak, when these are used up, that's gone, that $8,000 is gone. But if you're making me invest in something, traffic, whatever, that's permanent, quote-unquote. You know, could that, I mean, I mean, I don't know if any of that discussion has come up. But, I mean, if I was on the other side of the podium and it was to my advantage, I might make that point like, well, wait a minute, you let these folks do kind of a temporary thing, but you made me do this, you know, contribute to something that's going to, I don't know, I just... I think same with Mark. It would just, it's a precedent that just feels a little bit, where could this go? It seems like a really good thing, but...
I think it's well-intended.
Yeah, but could it come back?
It could be a good precedent that other people follow, but you won't want people to take advantage of it.
Right, I guess that's my only, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, you know, the idea is to offset those automobile trips. So I think that in some cases, yes, you, in some cases, it might not make sense because there's not going to be a population or the location isn't right for busing, you know, for mass transit or maybe even bike share.
All of which exist in this particular...
Exactly. So I think that that's where it makes sense for you to evaluate, is this even a feasible alternative? And so you're right, it may be temporary, but it may also be, you know, if for a year, someone gets hooked on taking the bus or the bike.
Absolutely.
They might sign up for that second year, third year, whatever it is. So...
To determine how easy it is, if they recognize that this is feasible and not sort of pie in the sky, then, then the cost-benefit of not having an automobile under those circumstances would be...
And by its very nature, the nature of the idealized consumer... And by its very nature, the nature of the idealized consumer fits, yeah, I mean, I mean, it fits this type of, of bike or bus solution, yeah.
So, not to hang on this, but I get all of that, and I agree with all that, but how do we make that a condition that's less than three pages long? I mean, do we, can we just put it up to the applicant in the city to figure it out?
Yeah.
And to demonstrate that it is being figured out over a certain period of time?
Yeah, I mean, what you can say is, you know, I'd recommend that it's sometime after certificate of occupancy, that's always the way it's written for all your trip, because that's when the impact will be felt. And you could say, you know, that they've met the standard in the zoning to the satisfaction of the city by, you know, showing that they've purchased X number of passes or what have you. They could also come back and say, you know what, we decided we're going to put money into modifying this intersection, or putting, striping something else, so...
But taking that example, say you say, at yearly intervals, you have to demonstrate you've bought passes off of, and you're working off this threshold, or something.
Yeah.
I follow that, but who, whose purview is that? Is that, does Louis have to knock on their door and say, show me your bus passes?
Well, I mean, you could also then put in an annual, you know, annually until you've reached your amount, you need to submit reporting, and then that way, it's not, the burden isn't on the city to go and knock on the door.
Right.
So, yes, I mean, and if you've done that in other, so there have been instances where the board has required a phasing of mitigation, so after...
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so after two years, you know, pay this much after the fifth year.
Right.
So, and, and also reporting, so you could tag the reporting piece on too, until, you know, and you could say annually until you've met your mitigation total.
Yeah.
And it could be submitted to the planning office.
And I mean, it does not be complicated, it could just be a letter saying, you know, here's our, you know, on this check, or whatever, okay.
So you just put your get in his schedule, right, pretty much so.
I just want to, this is going to be the first step of, potentially could be utilized somewhere else to make it not, not unduly burdensome on the city, but something that can work for the applicant and everybody wins.
But there is monitoring, you know, there's...
Right, some, there's some formality.
I agree, yeah, I think that's...
So you can do annually from, starting from the date of CO?
Until the fund, until that fund is exhausted, yeah, okay. Other comments, questions from the board?
Can you tell me what you think the timeframe is, given that there's an awful lot of money that has to be found in order to do this?
Yeah. What we plan to do, assuming we have some kind of zoning permit this fall, we would be applying for state funds spring of 2018. We would expect to get rejected, because the queue is long for funding. We would expect to reapply in 2019 and have a good chance of getting funded. So you look at really construction in 2020. So it's, it's a long, it's a long haul.
And the people who are still living in these units and...
They are.
Other construction, then you'd be relocated to someplace else, right?
Yes.
Part of their budget for it, right?
It is part of the development budget to relocate folks, and it's a requirement when you work with federal funds. So we're anticipating a nine-month construction on this building, it's, it's a gut, so everybody goes. And we would have someone who we'd hire just to work with tenants, to relocate them, so people get moving costs paid, they get help finding the new unit, and they get the incremental cost difference between the old unit and the uni, new unit paid for them. And then they have the right to return once the units are, are ready. But easier said than done, but yeah, it'll, it'll... I had met with the tenants on site, it was one of the first meetings I had, because I thought people might be anxious about this idea that they would need to be relocated. Sometimes people start looking right away, and this project is years from now, so I wanted to, and the response I got was very different than the response I expected, people like, when is it going to happen? I was like, oh, I'm sorry, it's going to be years from now. So tenants, the, the needs there are pressing, so people were on board.
Questions, comments from the board? Would anyone like to close the public hearing?
Last question, just on, on tree removal, tree replacement. Since we can't, trees are coming down, they can't be replanted, similar to the first applicant. Has that been reconciled with the applicant as far as money going into the tree fund, or...
Yeah, so let me actually go through the DPW comments, because DPW asked for a condition to be included that relates to that, you know, finalizing that list and having them approve it. So, they...
So, I don't know, Caroline, if they saw our response, we had revised the number of trees coming down.
Yeah.
We originally had two significant trees coming down, and DPW and other people looked at the plan, and there were some trees really close to the new foundation, then they were like, come on, guys, these trees aren't going to make it. So it was revised upward to the four trees, and we, we sent that in in our comments, it's a sixteen thousand dollar estimated fee that we would pay. And I'm not sure if the DPW saw that revised language that we had submitted, it seemed like maybe they just didn't see that.
I don't know, but that's also one of the things that I think they might want to look at in more detail, so we can, so there, you saw the comments that came back about finalizing that?
Yep.
And I think that could be part of that discussion. So let me just make a note of this, too, I don't think that needs to be in the condition, the value, but, let's just see here, sorry. So they, DPW wanted sort of revised plans showing the additional trees to be removed, and a new calculation for the reimbursement of all trees removed. And that, their comments just came in today, so I'm thinking they didn't see that. And, and that the applicant shall submit an alternate maintenance and tree protection plan submitted by a certified arborist for review and approval by the tree warden prior to the issuance of any city demolition or construction permits. And I think Carlos spoke to that, too, that they were going to get their arborist on, so if you included that as a, as a permit condition, and at, you know, they specify at a minimum, the plan should include tree protection details conforming to the NC 300 standards, part five, protecting the forty-inch elm and twenty-four-inch apple, which at the entrance of the driveway, and that the contract, the tree protection plan shall be included in the contract documents and graphic details in the final construction drawings, and that's just obviously so the contractor who's doing the work sees what, what that is. They also had stormwater comments about developing the maintenance and inspection program, and that they get a signed maintenance agreement prior to construction of the project, and they needed some more details about drain connections, so they want those on the final plans for yard drains, water, and sewer line connections. And finally, let me just make sure, and then there was a note in there about, the Bridge Street was just paved, so there's a five-year moratorium, so if they plan to construct within that five-year moratorium, they want the construction plans to reflect that they're going to have to repave much farther beyond that cut into the street. And they also had a comment, and I don't know if the applicant talked about, about their concern with the trash truck not being able to back out. It was really more of a note that it's sort of like the existing conditions, but they were, they weren't recommending any conditions related to that. And that's about it.
Just made me think of a dump truck coming in and not being able to back out, what about snow removal? Is that, is there a similar issue with where's the snow going to go, if, so is there a plan, removal?
Yeah, we have identified on the plan, didn't you...
Do you suggest one less parking place, so that there was one more space for...
Yeah.
Yes, I don't think they...
So on this plan, it's showing, um, snow, snow storage basically left next to the bike rack, and then also some snow storage kind of in the front of the property. It's better than some sites we're working on in terms of places to push snow. You know, can the plow truck, if it's just a pickup truck, make that turn and, and get out? I think they probably can, but...
So the DPW is o, is okay with that aspect of the plan as far as snow removal?
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, sort of sites downtown are all pretty tight that way. There was one question that I had sent to Lauren, and sent to you as well, about that parking space in the front, and is that still on the plan?
No, it's been away.
Okay.
So we came in, the original plan had fifteen parking spaces, and we took one away, we only needed fourteen to meet zoning, so there was one that went even closer to Bridge Street, that one was lopped off. So it'll look nicer, and it gives a little more space to pile some snow.
In, in some other hearings we've had, if, if the parking spaces could, can't be maintained, then the snow has to be removed, it can't just be, can't use the parking spaces to push snow. Is that something we want to consider, or is downtown a...
Well, I mean, I think this site is sort of, you know, it's in their best interest if they need those parking spaces to keep them open, because there's not really any other option. I mean, there's a little bit of on-street parking, but again, if it's a snow emergency, you can't do that. So, they're not going to ha, you know, it's, there's no place, there's no spillover impact on a budding neighbor, so I think that it's, they will find a way to work that out, just by the nature of the site.
Yeah, that's fine.
Comments from the board? Okay. Thank you. Close probably, I'm not... Second, Mark and Tess. Any other discussion from the board?
I, I think it's a home run, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great project, it's well thought out, it's, there's not much downside at all that I can see, and I'm curious how this, just because it's new, if this bike share bus thing works, then it might be...
A great precedent, yeah.
Yeah, and I think there, we'll have a chance to even think a little bit more critically in future projects about, there may even be other things other than bus passes, but, you know, another way of mitigating traffic is actually buying bicycles, like, that are an amenity to a development, and, you know, things like that, that kind of...
Well, and I appreciate, I appreciate the conversation apparently that took place about, okay, what can we start with as a, as a structure, and then how can we help that structure? This is what we're, you know, the general, this is what we're trying to accomplish, how can we do that in this somewhat unique situation?
It's great, this is great.
Sort of making that a case study.
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to make a motion? Or, you have no...
Want me to do it?
Oh, you can, well, I did the first one, I don't want to hog it.
On a roll, keep it, you guys are good on this.
I don't know that I got all the conditions, but we'll find out.
If you want, I can read through the ones that I noted from DPW that I had already put in here, or...
I have those three, and I have the five-year moratorium. Can I just say, and other DPW comments as noted?
Well, or, or you could just say, other, the DPW connection requirements and...
Motion approved, 40R, for renovation of unit at eighty-two Bridge Street, renovation of fifteen units, an addition of sixteen units, eighty-two Bridge Street map ID thirty-two A dash one seventy-eight, with the following conditions, that a maintenance plan for the stormwater system be finalized, approved by staff recorded at the registry of deeds, that applicant provide final documentation of tree removal and means of addressing replacement, that plans be revised to incorporate changes in details for tree protection, stormwater, and bike shelters, that Bridge Street repaving, if it occurs within the current five-year moratorium, be in accordance with paving requirements per DPW, that the DPW connection requirement?
Water and sewer.
Sewer be abided by.
Right, and then, basically, final plans show...
Final plans show compliance with DPW connection standards. And finally, prior to certificate of occupancy, applicant will submit proof of purchase of transit passes for residents equalling the required traffic mitigation amount, and an annual report filed, starting the date of the certificate of occupancy, until the fund is exhausted. Is that it? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good project.
It's terrific.
So, see the, the...
What's up?
See your...
Kel, do you need the, I took my pen drive off, but your presentation is on your desk.
Oh, that would be great, if I could...
Do you want to leave it there?
Yeah.
Perfect, I'll just leave it there.
So the probably, you know, people who are going to be eligible to live in this development...
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. And the...
Yeah, and now with the other thing, I mean, I've had guys working for me, it's free. Right, so maybe that, you know, that fund could...
For a long time.
Lots of people, yeah, so maybe there's more substantial permit.
As part of the bike, purchasing bike locks, too?
Bike share program?
If the, if the board is so oriented, I'd just like to make one suggestion on the agenda, we have a couple people here, I'm thinking for two different items, I think one gentleman's been here since the beginning.
It's all right, lose me.
But, okay, but, but I understand that you might be interested just in one of the zoning issues, so I was going to suggest that we address that, then close, then address the other person that's here, and then you guys can go and we can stay here till midnight, if that's what you, so I just...
Or not.
I hate for you to have to stay just while we go through this other thing.
I'm going to stay anyway, so you know what comes.
Okay, all right, well then, if, if that's okay, then, then we can address the item that's an addition about the tree replacement removal from Hinckley Trace, so I think...
The folks at Social Security think that I'm tech savvy, that that's an illusion, that...
Are you asking for help?
Is that a code for...
Yeah, I was, I was waiting for that, but it was very gracious.
So, well, the computer's not that great, and there are all these tables in the, in the way, so... See, they put the lock on the...
Right.
It's not you, it's, it's...
Ah, wait down there.
Yeah.
See if I can find that, see what's...
I know it's seen it.
These are the first, oh, I started to have, okay, no.
I broke down with them. Is that your thumb drive showing?
Yes.
Okay. So you can either, um, just open that up or...
It's a power plant, it will show up?
Yeah, it should be. So if I come, um, go down there, and let, with your mouse. We haven't, we haven't gone to touchscreen yet.
I know. Now that my kids have taught me to use an iPhone, I'm hopeless. So, thank you for a brief moment here. I'm going to just walk you through a little refreshment on this particular site, this is Hinckley Trace, which came to you as one-twenty-one Hinckley Street, it's one-fifteen to one-twenty-nine, eight homes. This is really just a reminder of the success story. This is eleven forty AM on the twenty-first of June, which is the summer solstice, and if you look at that, you'll see the, the shading line for protection of the glazing, sitting right spot on the bottom of the glazing. This is what you want to look for in terms of sustainability in buildings. The, the summer shading protects all the south glass from insulation, okay? So it's a, it's a, it's an important part of reducing cooling loads and creating comfort, and this shading is, is in many ways more important than some aspects of tree shading, because it protects the building from overheating. Okay, so, let's see here. This particular building is, so the, the project was modeled on fifteen percent shading from, from trees, and was designed around that. This particular building, um, is, so the, the project was modeled on fifteen percent shading from, from, uh, trees and was designed around that. This particular building on the northeast corner, in fact, has this shading from, uh, one of the trees on the site and an adjacent tree, which really makes the unit which is to the right of my cursor here, um, impossible to achieve. Solar, um, electric, which is what is dependent upon for, for zero. Not doing that zero over forty years on this project and the SunPower three sixty system will produce for sixty years is a net carbon load of five hundred and fifty-six thousand pounds. So this is the plan and it is this building here and it is this tree which is, which is causing those, um, that shading. And-
And Hinckley Street is on the left there?
Yes, yes. You know-
Just orienting my-
Yes, uh, after all this time in here, we still all stand on our heads and, you know, say, which way is Hinckley Street? Luckily, you have required that one of the buildings face the street, so we always, we always orient to that, otherwise we get confused. This is just a reminder of, of the extent of the planting that was proposed, um, not required, but definitely part of the, the scheme for the project. And, uh, going back to the Berkshire plan, uh, with about fifty thousand dollars worth of planting, so very extensively planting. We didn't obs- didn't come to this observation till the trees came out this spring and, and started to wander through this process. And, uh, my wife and I are developers, uh, in, in, for New Harmony Properties and we have committed to providing these people solar access. That is a necessary part of sustainability. And indeed, we've restricted, uh, who they can use and what they can use. We provided access to the Clean Energy Center financing at, uh, below market rates and outside of the loan-to-value. So what we have here is, um, a tree that's thirty inches at the appropriate height and it needs to come down. That's fifteen inches, which is, uh, five three-inch trees, which is worth about three thousand dollars. Did that come back from, from Rick, is Rich Parcellati is being-
Yeah, he agree, he, um, felt that was, that value was, um, accurate.
Yeah, okay. So it's about three thousand dollars and we can certainly do that. What we're asking the board to, uh, uh, allow staff to do is allow us to divvy that up. The, the, the landscape architect, Jeff Squires from Berkshire Design is a, is a Cape Cod native and he goes native for a couple of weeks in the summer, including this week. And it's great, but I don't have input from him as if, is there any place on the plan where we could put these trees? And not, not face, uh, you know, a, a shading problem later. The neighbor on this side would like more evergreens, so just put that into the board's consideration. It doesn't provide shade in the sense that you, you're looking for from shade trees. I would love to put some, we're gonna put some material here for her benefit, um, uh, as a, as a neighborhood courtesy. So the, the goal here would be to have your blessing on working on some split. If we can find to do them on, on-site, reasonably, we'd like to do that. If not, we'll pay into the fund at the, the rate we've suggested and, uh, I think that, that's the basis of any commentary here. We're happy to comply. It's just a quandary that we face in the development business and in our community as to how we balance these, uh, these, uh, needs. And of course, Carolyn raised the very appropriate point, you know, well, what's the carbon value of the tree that's there? And it depends if it's replanted, you know? Carbon is sequestered in timber if you harvest it and replant it. But the replanting becomes incredibly important, which is why forest stewardship is, is a, is a big deal. So there are no slam dunk answers there. And, and, uh, if you, if you read the Gazette and places like that, I'm a big fan of trees and what they do in producing oxygen, otherwise we would suffocate.
What will be, I'm trying to, so what's, I guess that's to the south. If that tree comes out-
Yes. That one?
Yeah.
Yes, there's another one right across the property line that we don't have any control over.
Okay. So for abutters or people viewing it from that direction, obviously a very significant tree is gonna be gone, but are there, I mean, where's the next?
Oh, there, there, there's, there's tree cover, uh, back in this whole area. There's another locust or shag bark, uh, right, right in that same vicinity. It's just over the property line. But the, the angle of, as we, as we can tell, the angle, uh, uh, improves the solar gain. So we modeled this on fifteen percent, uh, coverage from, from tree, tree interference, if you will. This unit has about twenty, this has about twelve, this has about nine, this has about seventeen. So, you know, it's all there. So actually, the, the, the tree shading that's most important is west. That's where the heat comes from. And so we're at the bottom of a hill here. We, we got lots of, uh, we've got lots of, of, of upslope shading here. It's not clear to us, uh, when, when this road reconstruction, which is, which is happening now, which is, which is wonderful, exactly what's gonna come out. There's some protected trees, there's gonna be some more tree planting. We'd love to see if, if our trees could fit into increasing that. You know, twenty years ago, there was no Arbor Program in North Hampton. And what we, what you have now is incredibly, um, uh, advanced and a stu- awareness of the interplay between these things, which is great. I have to say that, sitting here with this last presentation, I was just sort of enjoying the wafting up of civil discussion about important stuff. You know, it's really great what you do and what you sponsor here and we're very lucky to have this. So I don't have any, this is not, I'm not asking for any deference on any item. I'm just here to say we want to make this shift and we'd like to negotiate that with Carolyn and the DPW on that topic, so.
Yes, ma'am.
The tree that's going down, how much more sun is being added when that tree goes down?
Well, unfortunately, I wish we had the ability to, to snip it out, uh, in terms of the shading.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's a, it's a fair distance away as these things go. And I know there's a slant there and I'm trying to understand the double slant and how far that-
Sure.
You know, how far that gives it.
So the tree that you're seeing on this picture is, is irrelevant. That's, the, the shading is what I wanted to show you, which is the, which is the, uh, the locust and hickory. As you know, locusts in the city grow very tall. We had some in our house in Florence that grew to a hundred and forty-five feet and they were unbelievably tall.
Do you anticipate that all of that shadow is going to be gone?
No, but what we're gonna find is we're gonna see some penetration to the solar in the summer by around ten-thirty in the morning. And that will, as the leaves fall, we'll get some portion of that, so. So, and, and we lose it in the winter by about three-thirty, three-forty-five in the depth of winter. So we gotta get some of that curve, uh, into the mix.
Let me just clarify. So the reason why Jonathan's back here is because it's just a modification of the site plan. You didn't see that this tree was coming out, so, uh, again, sort of a change in, in midstream. So we, I posted it as a minor amendment. I did the same thing of trying to notify some of the abutters so they knew this was coming. And that, that's why they're, they're here, so just that one tree.
Thank you for that clarification. That's what we got, but, um, you know, this, this fifteen degrees, uh, from horizontal to the shade angle is something that I learned from, uh, some sustainability folks in nineteen seventy-five. And it's, the earth is still organized the same way. Magnetic field has shifted slightly, but this is pretty much the same.
It's caused by just a slightly increased roof-
Yeah, thirty-one inch, it's thirty-one inch overhang, uh, to the drip line. And that's, it was calculated based on that and was just cool when, you know, when the, when the numbers worked out. You know, like the measurements with your kid on the, on the door of the bathroom, like, you know, five foot one or four foot three. It was like, wow, there it is. That's the story. And, you know, if every house in America had been built this way since nineteen fifty-three, we would never, ever have had to build a nuclear power plant. Just turn them in the right direction and shade the south glass. That's all we had to do. I mean, sustainability has been at our fingertips for the entire development of the human race. And in the last four generations, we have turned the other way. It is really time to, as we have begun, to re-embrace this as normal, as not something that is, uh, optional or just for people with resources. This is easy. This is really easy. So I've been teaching about this, uh, providing workshops. Um, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. If you do nothing else, just point it in the right directions, so.
Uh, questions, comments from the board? Yes, Mark.
Carolyn, you said you tried to get ahold of as many abutters as you could. What formed that-
Well, I just emailed. I mean, again, it's not, we didn't, we're, I didn't mail out notice because it's not officially a full-blown amendment. And it's just a mi- I mean, I would call it a minor change, but, you know, there was a lot of discussion about this permit, so, um, I wanted to make sure at least some people- So with the emails that I had, I sent to a couple of the abutters and I asked them, please notify your friends about this. That was like three weeks ago, but I never got a response back.
Um, truthfully, I'm, I'm struggling a bit with this because there was a lot of pushback on this development that some people thought, in the, the abutters thought it was too much. Didn't, didn't disagree with it in, in format other than there was too many. Two would've been better than four. And now we're taking that a step further, one could argue if you're an abutter, and saying, in an argument to get sustainable design, which we can't get unless we chop down this big tree, which goes against sustainable design. So, and that might be an argument that an abutter might had if adequate notice was given, or they had. It may, it's the summer season, maybe people are at the Cape or whatever. And I don't necessarily, I can see that argument. I'm not advocating that that's, but, but with the level of pushback that this particular development had, I, it seems like somebody from, from the abutters should, would be here if they, you know, and so I'm, I'm struggling a bit with, with addressing this as a minor site change.
Um, and I, yeah, I mean, it was a very long, uh, hearing, I think more than one, actually, if I recall correctly. And, and I agree. I know this is, um, might not be seen as being very objective, but, um, what kind of interactions or response, or have you had any with the abutters since the project actually began?
Let me be frank with you. The project came in compliant and, um, frankly, in every way suitable and providing leadership in sustainability and affordability for the city of North Hampton. My attorney remarked that it was the ugliest public hearing in his experience in twenty-six years. I would say that less than two percent of the comments were appropriate to the project and to the conditions that were being addressed. So it was, I would consider it a public flogging and I would consider that the resistance has nothing to do with the merits of the project. It has to do with other issues that are social in the city and, uh, related to last fall's election. So with all respect, I would say it's very minor and I can leave it there. And in five years, they'll take it down and you'll have no, and it will not cost me three thousand dollars. Trying to do the right thing. And frankly, that evening was a bullying session, uh, in public and I think it's, uh, doesn't serve the public interest. So that was my experience, um, that evening. And, um, if they want to come, they can. This affects the neighbors not at all. It's not their, it's not their tree. It doesn't affect their shade. It's a few less leaves that will blow into the neighbor's property to the east. Really hardly noticeable. Those are my, my thoughts about that. I'm happy to, you know, to leave it alone and, and let the, let the buyer deal with it later. I just feel like it's a, a good thing to consider, at least at this point.
I think, just to follow up on that, that it is on that, um, back lot line as opposed to the side lot lines where some of the other houses are closer. So, um, I think that's another reason why I put it in front of you as a minor amendment as opposed to saying, okay, this really affects, you know, two people or three peo- or whatever the number is.
We've had great relations with the neighborhoods during construction. We've had zero, um, runoff, never mind historic blowouts, never mind any of that. So the stormwater during construction has been great. So they're gonna see a, a real improvement, continuing improvement in the stormwater in the neighborhood. And it takes some getting used to, uh, certainly. This unit down here has, uh, there's some pine trees here. We, we've called her Betty. I'm not sure her name is Betty, but her, she has become Betty and, uh, she's been very friendly and, and, uh, so, and we'll meet with Laura Norris, who lives over here, who's a longtime friend of ours, and see if we can find a way to fill in some, some evergreens in here. It really has to be textured as part of construction there because it was a enormous boulder that we moved over here. It's about seven and a half feet in diameter. So there's a little, we've kept some of that. We've moved some things around. We do have, uh, uh, some opportunities there, but, no, I think the, the ordinance is, is good and we're happy to make those. I just hope the trees get planted soon because if the tree comes down, to make the carbon piece work, they need to, they need to grow back.
Any other comments from the board?
I, I think that there is a concern that, that public meeting, hearing, I think you should, I don't know, clear that out because there is that concern. From what he presented, I, I, I see no problem, but then if there is a, something that happened before, then you'll have to see how, how we're able to see.
Well, I, I guess I would suggest that, you know, would it make a difference if they had come in originally and said, um, added one more tree to the list of trees that had to be removed for the project? So that's really what you're, you know, you approved the site plan with a, a lot of changes to the site. This is at the back of the site and it's just one they didn't, they forgot to include or they just didn't realize that it was gonna have an impact because they were trying to, you know, minimize the total clearing that was done. And so I, I think you need to look at it in that context, not necessarily how many people can show up to say they don't want another tree to come down. And, you know, I, when, um, Jonathan first presented the fact that he wanted to take a tree down, I said, please show what that impact is so that it's clear. And so I think the picture of the shading of the roof sort of does that. It's not, there's not an interest to just clear more trees. There, there's a purpose to it. So you approve this being a net-zero project. So if this is necessary in order to get to that, um, and it, I would still argue it's a minor adjustment. And even if one of the abutters did come and say, I don't want another tree to come down, would, you know, I guess you have to think about in that context, would that sway you to say, oh, okay, we're not gonna approve it?
I don't know.
I would argue that a little bit in that we didn't approve it as a net-zero project. We approved the development, which happened to be a net-zero project. And now the applicant's saying it can't be a net-zero unless you chop down this tree. And so I just, with the, with the, a nerve was certainly touched during that presentation. Whether the comments were adequate or not, a nerve was struck. And I'm just wondering if collectively we pass this and, and, and people feel adequate notice wasn't given on the heels of the, the preceding here. For the sake of a month, I'm just wondering if, if we just push this to September, gave adequate notice. If it's approved in September, it's still a planting season or cut-down season. And we just, we just do things by, you know, just give adequate notice. If nobody shows up, that's great. No harm, no foul.
What's adequate notice?
Well, just other than, like a, like a formal notice to the abutters versus-
So that's where, I, I mean, that's where I'd be concerned because, so we've established this, um, these sort of benchmarks or thresholds for, for when things are staff approval, when they come before you on a posted agenda versus when there's a full-blown amendment. And if we start mailing out notices that aren't really for a full-blown amendment, then-
That's my parallel as well.
We're saying, now we need to notify everybody of every-
That's right.
Yeah, it's, it's like an amendment would be like a new, like a categorically different, you know, condition or something that, you know, if it's a, a math difference, then that's, that seems to me to fall into the category of minor that we've discussed in the past, you know, that it, it's- You know, that it's sort of like crumbling arms.
Yeah, and I guess, Carolyn, I think your point, you know, okay, if it was originally part of the project, would it, you know, would it have changed our vote? If it's brought for you now, would it be a, you know, would we, would we be kind of changing precedent a little bit just for the sake of, you know, something that may or may not actually change our... And I don't, I don't know, Jonathan, how many trees have come down? I mean, it's, it is one more tree. It is a very large tree, and which will, of course. And as you pointed out, the somewhat paradoxical, we're going to take down a tree to do, I mean, there, you know, that part, I'm sure if someone wants to, will be thrown back. I certainly, I, you know, I agree because, yeah, it was a very, two very heated meetings. I think you were asked to recuse yourself. I mean, there was a lot that went on. But I guess I wouldn't, I don't know that it would change, you know. We approved this project. Something has come up during the implementation of the project. I, you know, I guess I don't see what would change whatever decision we already made.
Because the project was approved, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, are we gonna, I mean, is there something that's going to happen that we're going to say, "No, you can't do this"? I mean, I guess that's the, but it's, yeah, I, we certainly are opening that possibility that someone might come and say, "Hey, wait a minute. This isn't what you said, and you didn't give me..."
Well, so, just sort of back on the adequate notice piece. I emailed three weeks ago, so even if someone had been on vacation then, I mean, maybe they're on vacation for the whole summer. So, I'm not going to-
Maybe they're very fortunate.
But, if I could be on vacation for that time, I would be. But I'd probably also be checking my email and sending, you know, mad notice to everybody in letters saying, "This is the worst thing since I spread." You know, it didn't generate anything.
Anything.
Your gentleman says that your neighbor, you know, one, two, or three mentioned three different neighbors?
Yes.
Yeah. So, did they receive that?
I didn't have emails for those.
Yeah, that's my point.
So, I want just to remind the board gently that the neighbors do not have up or down authority over a project.
Oh.
Right? The authority rests with the board for compliance. This project was compliant from day one. So, the comments of the neighbors, the vociferous, could be addressed to very specific items. Stormwater, which was addressed, it's better than it was. And to neighborhood character. The neighborhood character discussion has been had ad infinitum for eight months. They're built. So, there's really, this tree is not a vote item of the neighborhood. They could come frankly by the thousands, and it makes no difference. This is an exchange of one tree for other trees that's part of the city ordinance. It's a bylaw. It exists. It's a right, actually, for the developer to do this. It's a courtesy to have the discussion, but it's part of the calculus that we do.
The hearing initially was a site plan.
I'm not dying to spend $3,000 at this point to do this, but I think it's the right thing to do.
There are eight unit, eight units, right? No?
Yeah. Eight?
Yeah, yeah, so a special permit.
It was a special permit hearing, a site plan.
Right.
Right, but the site plan, I mean, this was a site, the special permit was for the eight units.
Right, right.
The site plan, it was also a site plan. So, this is a minor modification of the site plan.
Right, but the argument wasn't, that's a little disingenuous in that it was just neighbors have no say. They have a say in the special permit discussion, and that's what, that was based, not on logistics or site plan and so forth.
Eight units are allowed by right. Eight units are allowed by right.
I know, but it was a special permit hearing.
Special permit is more than six units.
Wasn't it a site plan that, that it's-
It's a configuration. But the issue of density was by right.
Right.
You could have had an awful project there and never come to this board. Questions, comments, suggestions, action?
I'm comfortable considering it a minor, you know, it doesn't-
I think I am too.
Yeah, I don't see this as being something that would require reopening any kind of a hearing.
Just, I'm not, so I just want to make sure that we have the votes for, or everybody knows where I stand on it.
I would, I would be with Tess. I think I would, you know, at this point, I would agree with her. It's, you know, it's not a significant-
Maybe we need a vote so that it's decisive.
Yep.
I'm hoping to approve minor modification to the site plan for Henley Trace. I don't have the address in front of me. Sorry. Not ID.
What's the address, Jonathan?
I'm sorry.
115 to 129.
21, because that was, it hadn't been, it hasn't been assigned until then.
To allow for removal of one significant tree and adequate replacement per the city's tree replacement ordinance.
Posed, Mark?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience.
Of course. It's always good to see you.
We'll now open the 7:30 public hearing on the following proposed zoning changes. If you would like, we can, if there's a particular item you have a personal interest in, so I'd be glad to address that first if you, out of the list of six. Okay. Are you going to walk us through this?
Yeah, I just would need to disconnect from here so that I can connect over there.
Oh, okay.
Sit down. Like shame, shame.
Okay, so, did you say you wanted to start with the first one?
Yeah, I do. Can we ask a quick question on the previous item real quick?
Sure.
I'm just, it just popped in my head. Did you have to recuse yourself? So, should he have even participated in this last vote? I just, just-
Well, that's a good question.
It just popped into my head, but I didn't even think about it till I just, yeah. I don't know, but it wouldn't have, I mean, it wouldn't have made a difference, but I just think that may be brought up. Yeah, I didn't even think about that. I don't know what the permit-
Right.
Yeah, well, because if you'd done that initially, yeah, then it would make sense to carry forward.
Forward, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It's flogging later.
Yeah, yeah.
He's covered, he always bases it.
Yeah, exactly.
All of us are involved.
I'll sleep well tonight.
Yeah, let me just, who's air? I'm just trying to find this. Okay.
Save him for later.
The real, yeah, it didn't take any time at all. A little video's cast took all the time.
Yeah. Just write the majority because I didn't experience. But there was something to look at. See what there was.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I was.
Decided by ourselves.
Pretty bad.
Have you been over there? Have you seen it?
Well, it just changes the nature of the look in the area.
Tell me, I'm not going to be able to pull it up.
Yeah, but-
Yeah, well, that's right. I do.
Well, while this is coming, we can go ahead and start. Do you have copies of the ordinance? I have a couple of extra copies if anybody needs a packet.
Do I?
Yeah.
That's the whole thing. Make sure I still have mine up here, so I can do, oh, yeah, I do.
Anybody else need?
I guess.
Okay, one.
Oh, y'all.
I have it next to me.
Do you have it?
Just two.
If you don't mind.
Um, so, it's not like you want to go on for some reason.
Ooh. Playing hard to get.
So, the first item is modification to the sign ordinance to address some changes based on some court rulings about how detailed temporary signs can be. How, our ordinance isn't exactly content neutral. So, there've been some changes to be more specific about particular, some of our temporary, some temporary signage. And so, we went back and looked at our ordinance to see how, to make it mesh with more recent decisions. So, the first ordinance is a modification to section 350, 7.2(c). And it's moving all of that, which talks about temporary freestanding ground signs, to a new section and then, which, if you drop down to the second page, also deletes some content, some text that relates to content. So, it's clarifying 7.2(c) and just moving it to a different section, but deleting language that relates to signs that are for a particular cause or for, yeah, political signs. So, and that's because you're not supposed to be able to look at a sign and have to read it in order to determine whether it's legal or not, when it relates to that. So, we needed to take this language out. So, it would read, "Signs shall not," you know, so then it just sort of reduces it down to looking at what's an appropriate size sign in a residential district. So, that's the nature of this change. Signs shall not exceed three square feet and shall be on private property, not closer than five feet to any property line. Signs shall not be any higher than four feet from the ground. And so, just basically simplify it down to those. And so, it does reduce the size, but we're talking about residential districts, and we're talking about signs of any kind.
I'm thinking specifically of, like, Wright Builders or Valley Home or somebody who, or construct those temporary sign that they're all bigger than three, three square feet. Isn't all that big?
Yeah.
And I'm thinking of like just a home improvement person who plop, first things, they plop that sign down. And it's usually, you know, three by four or something like that.
Right. Um-
What's that?
I mean, not so-
Abbreviations only.
Not even a real estate sign, like a, with-
Yeah.
Right, three square feet is quite small.
That's not very much.
Yeah, I mean, well, three, so our, there's some, many of the real estate signs would meet that. There are, they've, there's been sort of sign creep in the size. And I think that goes for the contractor signs too. So, yes, it's a valid point. We are saying six feet to three feet. But we have, oh, actually, this sign, I think, is, if we measure it, two and a half.
Square feet.
So, these are the signs we do for public notice. So, it could be a little bit bigger than this. And it seemed, from stat perspective, that that's probably adequate for a real estate sign. You know, if something's for sale, you can see. So, that was, that was our intent from the stat side. If there's not an agreement and, you know, you want to pass that along, you think six is fine or something in between, you know, we're not wedded to the size. We just, we're trying to pick a number that would be across the board for all residential districts that wouldn't be too obtrusive in the neighborhood.
How big is that sign?
That's different. I think it's two and a half.
So, they don't need to be one in the front.
That's commercial.
They just cut my tail. Yeah. Or is it, is it three?
So, that's maybe 20 inches, 18 inches at least by-
At the place where he's building. In the residential area.
Two. So, that's a foot and a half by two.
Oh, that's three. Then.
Yeah, foot and a half by two, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's the size.
It just seems like it would be smaller. I don't know why, yeah.
Seems plenty big to me.
Yeah.
See, a lot of people remaking signs.
Yeah.
That's, that's-
You're getting a kickback from the sign.
I was going to say, it's economic development.
Ink will be cut off of a lot of signs.
They'll be writing and then I'll go down.
The other piece of that is, again, sort of cleaning up the language and deleting a section in the residential about no more than one sign indicating meetings or existence of civic organizations, again, because it's not content neutral. So, deleting that piece. Now, there, actually, I should say, the real estate signs in the upper, the paragraph above, there is a specific call-out for real estate signs or lease, is four square feet. It was six. So, that does give a little bit-
More space.
More space for that. I'm sorry, I forgot about that. And then a reduction in the setback from 10 feet to five feet, mostly because we've reduced the setbacks, the front setbacks for the districts to 10 feet, so.
And it's four square feet for the contractor signs too, I see, in the, in the next paragraph.
Um-
Temporary assignment architect, engineer, contractor, maybe erected.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry I didn't catch that before.
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
I think just make it four. For everybody? For everybody. So, there's no discussion.
Not more than four.
Square feet.
Okay. You think four?
Just make it four for-
Okay. So, I don't know how you want to do it. If you want to go through these, make a motion for recommending to City Council or go through the whole thing and then go back and-
Ask more in time as they read them?
So, you need a recommendation from-
For City Council, yeah, because City Council's going to review, have their public hearing on September 11th.
And do you need them for each one or can we just do the whole bunch?
Um, we, each one.
Okay.
Well, because you might have modifications, like in this one, you have modifications, so you probably want to vote on each one.
So, I move to recommend modifications to ordinance chapter 350-7.2(c) with the revision that all signs shall not exceed four square feet.
Second.
All in favor?
Do you have to recommend the deletion and the shifting of those as well?
Uh, no, because this is what was submitted as the ordinance change, so.
I have just one quick question. So, when we make that recommendation to City Council, it's not, it's just, they take it under advisement?
Yes, yes.
They bring it up and say, "This has been recommended."
Three square feet.
Right.
Okay.
Number two.
Okay. So, number two is just a tweak to section 8.7, which is parking, the required off-street parking spaces for educational uses. So, required off-street parking spaces, there was a provision that allowed for a special permit if you were providing parking further than, you know, either not on-site but within 500 feet or 1,000 feet. And this is just a clarification that that doesn't apply to educational uses, like, you know, secondary, primary, secondary, and then also colleges because we can't require special permits for educationally exempt uses. So, it's really just a cleanup of that.
Do I have a motion?
I move to recommend revisions to ordinance 350-8.7 as amended.
Second.
Second by any? All in favor? Number three.
So, this is the next series here, all related to photovoltaic panels. Section 8.9 to allow, create a provision for parking lots in which photovoltaic canopies are proposed. So, that in surface parking lots with more than 75 parking spaces, an added sentence that would state that the calculation for determining whether planting strips are required does not apply to the portion and number of parking spaces that are covered by one or more of the canopy. So-
That's not number three. What, what number one is that?
8.9.
8.9F?
That's four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, okay.
Sorry.
Yep. Okay. As long as you know what we're doing.
I had it stapled, I guess, in the- I had it stapled, I guess, in the wrong order. So, that's so that you don't have to plant under a canopy.
Yeah.
And then similarly, that you don't have to calculate trees in the area that are, that's being covered by photovoltaic canopy.
Only question is, say, the old Honda spot, say Home Depot comes in, puts up their building and you've got this massive parking lot and they want to cover it with PV over the parking lot, and thereby eliminate every island and a tree on the island that would have been there. Is that, I get that a tree on an island will prevent PVs in the area of the tree from working, but is there a scenario where we're, we're working against ourselves and you end up with just this, a lot of asphalt and a lot of PVs in a, in no trees?
Can you not limit the amount of PVs that are put up?
Or couldn't you, couldn't you, you say the, the type of trees that are planted on an island, they can be small decorative trees that aren't going to go, grow huge and thereby prevent the sun from getting at the PVs, but we wouldn't actually have to eliminate those trees in their entirety, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so I guess, for, to take an example of any, not necessarily just that site, but let's say a site that has a large parking lot would probably be in the commercial district. We do require planting along the street, a lot better buffer in the front. And so, I, and the purposes of trees in parking lots was to break up not, not only the heat island effect, but aesthetically, that expanse of parking. I think this ordinance is basically trying to encourage the use of photovoltaic arrays, and when you do canopies, you know, over a big parking area, you're, you are, you know, you're preventing, yeah, you're achieving sort of the, the reduction of that potential heat island effect because of the canopy. And also, you're not going to necessarily see, you're going to see more than just a field of asphalt and cars. Plus, you have the landscaping probably on the outside, on the, along the street where the sidewalks are. So I guess that was the, that's the idea.
I get the intent, but I'm thinking like the, say the Walmart parking lot, the big parking lot that exists, if Walmart said, you know what, we're going to put PVs everywhere and we're also going to take away all the islands and all the trees that exist, to me, that would look worse than. You do?
I mean, I'd rather, partly because the photovoltaic canopy is actually doing something, like it's more, yeah, yeah.
But to me, it's almost, in a weird way, like the, the previous thing where we've got to cut down this tree that could grow over 100 feet in order to get the sun to hit this house, but then you're, you're, it's like cross purposes.
From an aesthetic example, you're still, you've still got this large expanse.
Right.
That's just a large expanse.
Right, a large expanse covered with anything.
Is still a large.
Is still a large expanse. So I'm just thinking you want to break it up.
Does this thing prevent, does this thing simply say if someone wants to put up, up the, the sun things, that they can put them up everywhere? That once they decide to use that system, they can put it up over everything and that we would have no control of it?
No.
No.
It's still, this is, still would require site plan review. It says that the number of trees per, so there's a calculation of, for every parking space over 15, you have to plant one tree. The idea was that tree would be in the islands in order to create shade for the parking and break that parking up. It's not saying that you don't have to have any landscaping and that's where your purview would come in, that the, it's just the one per 15, you could also, as part of site plan review, say, you know, you need parking or vegetation or trees along the edge to break up the, the PV, the, the expanse of the PV, if it really is that expanse.
So you still got the same, you're saying you still have the same calculation, but.
You don't have the, you don't, I, it's not, it's not a straight calculation of one tree for 15, so if you had 50 parking spaces, 45 parking spaces, that you want to cover for canopy, you would be required to plant three trees total. What this is saying is, you don't have to, those 45 spaces that are under the canopy, you don't have to, you don't have to provide the three trees that you would otherwise, because we're getting a benefit of the canopy. That doesn't mean you're not planting trees on the rest of the site, because you might have parking elsewhere that are triggered.
Yeah, the around perimeter.
Yeah, but that, that's not the same, that's not the same question. If you had 150 parking spots and you simply, and you have this, the implication seems to be if somebody comes in and wants to cover the parking lot with 150 spaces worth of photovoltaic, then they can do that. And is that, was that really what this is saying, or could we not say, yes, you can put it on, let's just say, 75 in this, in this back part, but we want the front part to stay? I mean, I'm just asking the question about.
Well, I, I could see, worst case scenario is a row of trees in the front, a sea of asphalt covered by PVs, and then a store in the back.
That's exactly what I'm asking, and it could, could, does it simply permit them to have nothing except?
Yeah, it says where you have PVs, you don't need trees. And I'm thinking where you don't have trees, you don't have an island, and oftentimes.
It may or may not be bad, but it's, it means there's no choice, there's no control.
No, it says you don't.
The question is, is that what it means?
I think what it means is you don't have a planted island. There's still the pedestrian connectivity requirement, which may require you to have an island under the canopy, but it doesn't mean you put trees in that island because you've got the canopy. So I think the, the.
It doesn't mean that you have to put trees in the island, like they could if they.
They could design it so there's a break between the canopies. But, what it's saying, so you'd still potentially have to have islands for people to walk from parking space A to.
Essentially, but I'm, a lot of the islands now are used for runoff. You know, they're active, they're not, it's not just a walkthrough.
Right.
And so.
But they're.
To me, I'm thinking worst case scenario, this would allow them to eliminate all the islands and just have a painted yellow stripe where pedestrians walk, and we, there'd be no vegetation, no runoff, no, I, I could see changing it so you don't need a shade tree, but you, you know, it could just be a, a small decorative tree that's not, or something like that. I, I, I'm just thinking worst case scenario, which I never really see happening, but I wouldn't want.
And I guess I would go, maybe along, maybe going with Mark in that, why, why does doing a good thing and doing the photovoltaic mean you don't have to do the, I mean, to me, you're going to, I mean, yes, some people are going to do it for altruistic reasons, some are going to do it because it's economically advantageous to them.
Right.
And that shouldn't, part of that shouldn't be that they don't have to plant the trees they would have had to plant, I mean, why do we change the tree requirement just because of, you know, they can put trees somewhere else, or they can go into the city fund and the trees, and it's somewhere, I mean.
But then we could also, I mean, really, we should be reducing the amount of parking that's allowed, I mean, that's like a whole other thing, like, I just don't think that the tree in a planting is having that much of an impact.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think that it's having that much of a.
Yeah, but, but I, I guess.
Like, I don't see.
Why would we reduce the number of trees that need, that are going to be required to be planted? I guess.
Well, I think because the intent was, going back to heat island effect, like, we're talking about, like, way back when, I mean, way back when, like, 30 years ago, like, the only way that we could offset heat island effect on giant parking lots was let's plant some trees. But now we know that building a canopy that creates shade that's covered with photovoltaic panels is a more effective way of offsetting that impact. And so we're saying if you're going to do this thing instead and meet that goal, then we're not going to require you to do this other thing. I mean, I don't know, it's.
But the, the array does have both a ecological and economic benefit.
Right.
So.
And a cost, though, it's certainly far more expensive to put up PV canopy than to put up some trees and a little island.
You look at like where the Greenfield Savings Bank is, that, that coal vest development, so I don't know how many islands with trees and plantings are. You take all those islands and trees and plantings away and just put PVs, just aesthetically, you drive by King Street, which we've.
See, I feel like that would look so much better.
I think we've taken, that's what, that's what's good, is that we have different pains. But I think, we, we. You go down King Street and we've taken such pains to have that pedestrian belt with the trees and where it's coming together, I drive by and I think, this is great, this is what we're trying to do. And if right behind that, it was just.
Yeah, this expanse.
PVs, that would, I'd say, ah, we, we, we're going the wrong.
Yeah, I, I guess I did, and I guess I just don't see why the two things are tied together.
Right.
You know, why, why eliminate the one good thing because you're doing this other good thing? Because the other good thing has its own justification.
I guess the idea is that you couldn't plant trees under a canopy.
But you could still plant them somewhere, or they could go into the city tree fund.
If it's not, if it's not a tree that's going to grow 100 feet, if it's just, if it's a, if it's a decorative tree that's going to grow.
So we're saying if you're going to put up PV canopy, then you, then you don't get a pass for.
Yeah, you don't get a pass for planting trees somewhere.
And we'll still do the same calculation.
Or, you have, if your tree is there only to provide shade rather than to provide landscaping, if it's there only to provide shade, then the PV provides the shade. But if it's to provide landscaping and break up the parking lot, then you've eliminated that and you've got.
That's what I'm thinking, give them a pass on requiring a shade tree, but don't give them a pass on providing a tree by itself.
Or, some form of.
I'm a big fan of the trees tonight, so.
They can't do it there, it can go into the fund, it can go somewhere else.
This tree fund is just growing.
Now I feel terrible.
This tree fund is huge, I tell you.
So what do we do, how do we, how do we change this then?
We vote it down?
I mean, do we just eliminate the addition or?
Or do we vote that we don't support that amendment? And just leave it and then the, that's our recommendation to the, to the council.
Yeah, you can do that.
So I think it would be that we would vote, we don't support this one, we supported the first one, we don't support this one, and then it goes and they still can do whatever they want. I mean, it's still, it's just a recommendation.
Right.
Our recommendation would be, I guess, that we don't.
So, but is it just 8.9H, you're fine with 8.9F?
We haven't talked about it.
We haven't, we haven't.
Oh, I was focused more on F than H.
Right.
I think.
We, you, what you read was F.
Well, I think both. One, we're, in the planting strips, the other, we're eliminating the trees, and I, I would say no to both.
Oh, both, uh-huh.
Are there any examples of this in Northampton?
So I, like, the chances of, I don't think this would ever be in practicality and.
So Mark, do you want to make a motion, I guess, that covers both of those?
I just wish they would increase the ability to pull your car in there.
Yeah, something like that.
Has covered, yeah.
UMass has it in their parking lot by those theater stuffs.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
For, so this, is this for?
For all of that, section 8.9.
So I, I'm, I'm making a motion to not recommend three, revisions to 350 dash 8.9F and H as amended.
Second. All in favor?
So, is that just? That was three and four.
Four.
That was four.
That was just four, so let's go back to, sorry, let's go back to three.
Any more tree stuff?
Still tree stuff, Mark, there's still.
Um, so, oh, okay.
Okay, three is.
I maybe not have printed this out right. So, um, so this is for amendment that would address in the special conservancy district to, right now, and there's a special permit allowance for, for accessory PV, ground-mounted on a parcel, that's just, is it, so it's an accessory, but there's nothing for just ground-mounted solar. So this would add a provision under the special permit criteria that you could do solar, photovoltaic, non-accessory, ground-mounted when the following conditions exist. The location of the system has not been in agricultural production for at least 25 years, and the location is over soils that are not considered prime agricultural soils as listed by NRCS and Department of Agricultural Resources, and the panels are located within 100 feet of a power line and/or pole, and the system will not exceed 8KW. The idea behind this was that, originally, when we adopted this, we were, and the agricultural commission as well was concerned that if in this special conservancy district we allowed non-accessory PV, then we would eat up the farm land.
People would buy up hots and just put ground bikes.
Right, it's flat, it's, so, this is sort of a tiny step towards thinking about, well, maybe there are some occasions where it makes sense. So with these stipulations, still special permit, but in order to even apply for a special permit, you'd still have to meet these things, so.
What's the 20, where did the 25 years come from? Is that like our other communities doing that, or is that like a, like a generation of farming?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Generation of family farming or something?
Right, right, so it's, it's been, you know, so that it's not that you can take your land out for five years, waiting.
Right.
And planning, and then all of a sudden you've got a whole area that's.
But what if it's my property and that's what I want to do?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
The idea is that we don't want to lose for the greater good of the community, we don't want to use productive agricultural land.
Photovoltaic seems like pretty good general purpose benefit, yes, sir.
I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I've been, I own special, Wayne Tebow, 830 Chesterfield Road, Florence.
Oh, okay.
I own three parcels of property in the city of Northampton. I've been in energy conservation since the 70s. I've saved countless amounts of money for businesses and so forth. I wanted to put solar in. I looked at my home, couldn't do it, trees, everything else. I dealt with solar companies to come in and take a look at everything. I own a large parcel on North King Street, 33 acres, got a cut of trees. I own down the Meadows, a five-acre piece, and on the five-acre piece, I have a section that is non-agricultural. I, I probably owned the property 27 years. So, I says, well, this would be a good spot. I had them look at it, I went and I talked to different solar companies, they came to the building department and said, this is allowed. So I looked under the, the zoning and so forth. In that same area, if you, if you go in special conservancy, everybody has it on their roofs, but it's allowed on the roofs. There's a big ground mount down there, that's, it's pretty large scale, probably 40, 50 panels. I inquired about that one, why is that one allowed in special conservancy, but I can't put enough for my home. I'll just jump ahead. What I wanted to do is put down enough, small scale, to supply my home where I live. Talked to the National Grid, yeah, we'd do that, no problem. If it's a different utility on the other side, they don't do it. So then I, I went down to the building department and I paid a fee, filed for a permit. I was denied because of the zoning. It was denied because I'm not using the electricity there. The same road, the same road I live on, Chesterfield Road, there's a large-scale facility that four members of the family are drawing power off. Northampton City, the landfill, where's all that power going? It's going throughout the city. And, and it goes on and on. This has been going on for approximately two years, I stepped back, and last year I brought it before the city council. I've been to the planning apartment and, and it's like what was stated earlier, they didn't want the farmers to put large scale. I says, I'm not putting large scale, I'm just putting enough in for my house. And it's not a non-agricultural piece, that I don't, where I grow straw and so forth down there, hey. So, going through this whole process, I mean, countless hours, countless research, everything else, and there's all kinds of funds that come back. I went, I got ahold of, not senator, but other politicians, they didn't want to mix up the city politics. And, and yet, everybody can do it. I can't do it for my, for my house? That is, that is, that isn't right. And, and it isn't large scale, like, I asked, how many people in Northampton, there's 3,000 acres in the Meadows, how many people have applied? And I never got an answer of how many people. Industry maybe, or somebody wants to go big scale, but not somebody small like me. And everybody, like I said, everybody on the street, the whole airport, everybody else has got it. We get grant money, everything else. You go to the Mass Laws, they say. You go to the mass laws, they say you can't discriminate on it and so forth, but you try, but you, I went to just, uh, the attorney general's. And they don't want to get involved with the cities and towns, with the politics of that. I mean, if I wanted to hire a top notch lawyer and pay a lot of money to put in a few solar panels, I, I believe I'd win the case. But now it's come to this. And believe me, if I wasn't retired and had to put in all this time, and I'm, and I'm up in age too, is it even worth it? And not only that, the incentives are dropping. The SREC's one, two dropped as of March of 2018, and everybody's out straight now putting them in. If it isn't by March of, uh, 218, you lose approximately, on a small scale, for a home, about $8,000 in the payback. And I've lost countless before on the SREC's. So now even, even with this passing, it's kind of a, a battle trying to get it in.
I, I'm not going to disagree, I'm, having just returned from the Midwest and flying over and seeing wind farms as far as the eye can see with hundreds of mills, which is, which is on agriculture land, that farmers have done because it's another revenue stream in the difficult, I mean, I have a hard time telling somebody what they can and can't do with their own property. And 25, I mean, 25 years seems, I mean, that's a generation, that's, you know.
To me, the, the first and second point might be redundant. The 25 years and the, the second one, the prime agricultural soils. If, if it's not prime agricultural soils, then it wouldn't, right, for the last 25 years, right. So I think it's, to me, I, I wouldn't use the first one and I, I could, I guess, use the second one. But then I, I agree with you a little bit. My house, I tried to do, looked into solar, couldn't because of all the trees. And it's counterintuitive to me to cut down a bunch of trees just so I can get solar, so ended up.
You made that point.
So I ended up with it, so a deal, so I own part of some solar farm somewhere, you know, on the Mass Pike or something. And so it makes me feel good, and I don't cut any trees down, and I get, you know, a reduction. So I hear what you're saying and it, I get the intent of this, but in this particular case, that would, I imagine, be deemed prime agricultural soils down the meadow.
I have no idea, well, I mean, he, um, Mr. Tebow is just saying that he has a portion of his property that's not prime, so potentially he could.
I said, why it, could I grow something on it? I think any piece of dirt you dig down the meadows, you're going to get the same consistency, the soil. What I have is when I drive into my field on the left side, it was a natural, it's, the, the land is about that far above the roadway in that one area, and it's a natural hill, and then it, it slopes down. The rest is all total flat, that's what I farm. Could I farm that hill? Of course, you can farm any hill, right? The soil is, the soil is going to be basically the same. There's not a stone in it.
I, I have a hard time telling somebody what they can't do with their property. I, I, I mean, this is, to me, this is, you know, this is, especially agricultural land, which is meant to be in production, then what that production is, I mean, that's like, to me, this is like saying, well, you can grow tomatoes, but you can't grow cucumbers.
Well, I'm thinking on Chesterfield Road, and now if we're talking about the same one.
Yeah, I'm sure.
That, that, big piece of property with some horses and so forth.
Right.
Allowed a PV, a ground mounted.
Right.
Is that agricultural soil? I mean, you.
No, but it's a different zoning district. The idea is, it's special conservancy, it's prime agricultural land. So we can treat different properties throughout the city differently based on their.
But from a, from my very long ago liberal arts college economic degree, you know, who's to say what prime agricultural soil is? The farmer, the person who owns it. They're going to.
It looks like NRCS, no, like, that's.
Yeah, it's like, it's, it's prime agricultural. That's, that's the, sort of, the standard, it's not something I can grow. It's, you know, an acre of alfalfa.
Where that large, that large array, as I told you, by the airport?
Yeah.
There's a hay field right next to it. That's the same thing, you could take it, you, you could take, but the way it was written here, you had to use the electricity there.
The other thing is there were exemptions specifically for airports and landfills because the airport can't, you know, you can't farm on the airport, they need to leave a certain amount of space because of, you know, the rules. So there, the zoning specifically incorporated certain circumstances where it made sense to have PV arrays. So this is really about, the restrictions now are in place over the prime soils in the city for agricultural production.
And, and is the sole restriction that's tripping the applicant up, the fact that you have to use the power at the site? Because that's, that's what I meant on, like, on my house, I couldn't, I can't.
We only, we don't allow non-accessory. We allow, if you have a house there, you can put it on your roof, or you could potentially put it on the site if it's for, sourced for that, um, structure.
Right.
But you can't.
He's trying to.
No, he's trying.
His house is not, yeah, somewhere else.
How far away is it?
It's not on the same.
Same grid, same power company.
But it's not.
Okay, I understand now.
Any other thing? I just picked up, I was looking through some newspaper article, that about 130 homeowners in Northampton sell solar credits through the COG for the excess energy credits they produce. So they're not even using, this is excess they're using. And East Hampton does so much in that article and, uh, and another town, but Northampton is one of the highest, next to Amherst, I believe. So that's basically the same thing. But I'm not looking out to make, I want it, I want it so I can, I want to do the same thing.
It does seem slightly odd to me that you would limit solar panels and not like tobacco, like, it's, you know, it does seem somewhat arbitrary in some ways, but.
Well, but we do want to make sure we're special conservators for the population for the future. I mean, we've lost farmers, we've lost farmland over the years, you know, in terms of sustainability, we want to be able to continue to grow food that's, um, you know, close to home. So there was a concern about just opening the doors and saying, okay, eat up all the farmland with, you know.
That isn't opening the door. It's, it's, you're, it's small scale, and it's limited to so many kilowatts you can produce. It ain't that I can go put three or four units up and overproduce and sell all the credits. The other thing, the other thing would be, what if a person turns around and says, well, I got that acreage, I don't want to farm it. Maybe I'll just scrap the land and everything. What benefit is that to anybody? I mean, I'm still using it for agriculture, the majority of all the property.
Is there a percentage? I mean, it seems like if someone is just using it for, if they can prove that, if they can only build, I mean, I know nothing about solar arrays, but if they only can build five, because that's what you need for a family of four, you know, shouldn't, should that be allowed? It's their property.
But that's what.
System size is.
This ordinance is trying to allow a little bit of it. So that's what's on the table now, is nothing now that's non-accessory. This would allow a little bit with these stipulations.
So if a little bit, if, to me, if you eliminated this first stipulation and allowed two, three, and four, which would allow a little bit in certain situations, but then with the added one, I don't, I don't know that we, that I see the absolute need to have the power generated from this limited instance to be used at that site.
No, this, this provision is saying.
It doesn't deal with that, I know.
No, no, no. This is a special permit provision proposed to be added to allow non-accessory. So this would mean you could do what he wants to do.
Okay.
That's the whole point of this, basically.
I guess, one question, in the special conservancy district, are, I mean, aren't all the soil, are all the soils considered prime agricultural per NRCS? Like, is that why they're in the special conservancy district?
It's not why, they're in the special conservancy district because it's the flood plain. So there are areas that are, you know.
So there, I mean, I'm curious if the second bullet is never going to be met. Like, is that a condition that is never going to allow somebody, because if you're in special conservancy, there's like a 99% chance or something? Like, I'm just curious.
I would go, I would go along with Mark, except I would, I would say I'd support it if it was three and four, but not one and two. If you took out one and two and left three and four, I'd be okay.
Because by its nature, 8KW is going to be small anyway.
Right, yeah, because, I mean, I think it's accomplishing what you want to accomplish, and it allows it, and a little, it's a little bit less restrictive about where it's allowed.
I thought one and two is in an effort to keep farming, right.
Unless that's for land.
Right, but I think.
But what the farmer wants to be.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, yeah.
But I think what John's saying is it's still going to limit it.
Yeah. It's still, you're still going to have this huge expanse.
Right.
All of a sudden, because it's economically, you know, whatever, attractive for right now.
They, they do list on sizes, and small scale is, I believe, up to 10KW. And I believe if you go over that, it's different rules with utility and everything else.
Yeah, then you're going.
So if it's small scale, yeah, right. So if it's small scale, it's small scale.
I, I would, I would, I'd be supportive of three and four, but not one and two. That would be mine.
I can go along with that.
Yeah. We're ready to close. Motion closed.
Yes, we haven't really opened it.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion on, I guess it's number, this is number three.
Motion to recommend the city council, uh, change in, ordinance change for 350, attachment 18 SC district, to recommend the following two bullets, solar photovoltaic, non-accessory ground mounted would be allowed only when the following two conditions exist. Panels are located within 100 feet of a power line and/or pole, and the system will not exceed 8 kilowatts, kilowatt hours, kilowatt, something, 8KW.
All in favor? Oh, second, sorry. Mark's second. All in favor?
So this is, we've already voted, but it's a special permit anyway, so it would, it would.
Still have debate.
Still have a big, all broad discussion about the whole thing, so, thank God.
Number three.
So five.
Eleven, six, yeah, eleven, six, I'm sorry.
Okay, so adding a site plan approval criteria, so this is if you're in site plan, that adding a new subsection that for any new building, so in additions, so of over 2,000 square feet or if other site plans triggered, the applicant must show that the building is designed to accommodate solar power installation. This is met by showing that the roof design can support panels and that the roof orientation, conduit, electric service will be incorporated so that installation can easily be added either at the time of construction or at any point thereafter. Alternatively, the applicant may show that the site is designed to accommodate solar with conduit to be located to accommodate the ground system. Planning board may waive this requirement for green roofs, or if the applicant provides information to show that either the building mounted or ground mounted systems are impractical due to site constraints or orientation.
So if you're in a skinny rectangular lot that is surrounded by 100 foot trees, you can just say, I'd like to, but I can't.
You just got to prove it.
Yeah, there's no possible way that I could.
So, um, but this is also saying for the addition, so let's say you had a skinny lot and you were billed adding on, and it was over 2,000 square feet, and it's not for a single family home, because single family homes don't trigger site plan. So, um, or a commercial use, 2,000 square feet, even if you're surrounded by trees, it's saying, you don't have to install the PV, you just need to show that the roof loads can accommodate it, that you have a conduit, so it's there, so that if you don't want to do it, someone in the future could potentially do it.
Well, it's not just the roof load structurally can support it, but the roof orientation and so forth is, is, lends itself to PV. But if you have a pre-existing three story building and you're adding to the back and it's, the orientation is all wrong, you can't.
Right, so then you show.
You ask for the waiver and you just, yeah, so, okay.
That's, that's pretty, like, novel, like, this, it's pretty bold.
Aggressive.
Yeah, that's kind of great. She's like, that's what we do here in Northampton. I mean, that's, no, that's, that's really, like, quite impressive. That's like a very impressive ordinance. Is it a huge, I mean, in terms of design?
Yeah, the cost of, of that kind of, I mean, the cost of a building, a roof that's that much stronger, I mean, there's lots of ways, it's, it's a huge cost.
I mean.
And.
Global mass extinction due to climate change is also a huge cost.
Okay.
I kind of feel like if you're going to do an addition or, you know, a new building, like, we got to force people to think about what, you know, like, this is like the whole idea of sustainability, like, we're just going to push costs to somebody else.
So does this, like, Valley CDC, do they need to do?
Can I just?
Sure.
When I, when I read that in there, I wanted to, I was kind of against it, but I went and talked to the building inspector, and he basically told me, he wrote it. But he said that, and he gave me the reasons why. But he said that, that's going to change anyways with the new mass building codes. But if, but if you think about it, think of all the hundreds of houses in, in Northampton that they put solar on. They were built in the 40s, 50s, 60s, but they were inspected by the building inspector. They had to be to get the permit.
Right.
They were approved.
Our house has it, it wasn't built to have it, it was put on afterwards.
So what I was, what I was questioning is, what would be the added expense, expense of, when you build a new house, 2,000 square feet or, what is the extra expense if these hot houses were built back then and they were, they're approved? But what he, but what he used too is that, on a lot of your commercial buildings or flat roofs, where they put these ballasts up there to hold the panels down, that's basically what he was worried about, all that extra weight they put on there.
It, yeah, to me, it, it seems like it, it's more of an assurance that you don't, that somebody doesn't go cheap in their building materials, whatever, and, you know, it, I mean, it would seem like if you're using good standard materials, and Mark's the expert, not me.
It's kind of.
It would, it's not really going to add.
It's like an extension of now of like the stretch code or.
Yeah.
Sustainable design or something like that. But I'm, to your point, like, the Valley CDC project, there aren't a lot of trees in the area, but the orientation of the lot is, maybe it doesn't lend itself. I can see, does this become unduly burdensome to applicants where 90% of the time, it's not going to work, but then they have to add this added step to show that it's not going to work? You know what I mean? Or?
Can we change this, the responsibility of that showing part and just say if, that we can provide a waiver if the site plan or if an engineer says, yeah, I mean, like, I think we're getting hung up on, like, what does that mean to show that it doesn't, you know, if there's a way that we can provide a waiver without having to require some other more expensive separate report, like the stormwater reports that we get, you know, if it's, if it's in the narrative of the application that the engineer is signing or that the applicant is signing, is that sufficient to show us that they've looked at it and it can't, it's impracticable? Like, you know, like, what is, yeah, like, can I kind of make that showing burden?
Yeah, I mean, I guess by adding the term engineer, I think you might be reinforcing the burden, because this language says the applicant provides information.
Right.
Whereas, you know, you may, projects that are less than 5,000 square feet typically don't have an engineer.
Right.
Designing it. So I think this leaves the window open, the board can decide, is there, has there, have you shown enough to us?
So that could just, too. In the course of a hearing, an applicant could say, I had someone come out and look and mass save came out, or whomever, and, and it's impracticable for.
Or you can show the orientation of the building and the site.
Right.
And if we're not comfortable, we can do like we did tonight and say, okay, no, we want, we want something.
Somebody to.
We want somebody to come and say, yeah, this is really, I mean, if we, if we just, if we didn't feel like it met the standard.
How about, say, the Calvin Theater is going to undergo this big gut renovation.
Is that true? Is that true?
Would this kick in, and then have them required to modify the roof structure?
That new construction of a square feet.
Or be over.
Add additions.
Say there's an addition to the back of the, in existing buildings somewhere downtown, would we then force the applicant to have a structural analysis of a roof, or, or move mechanical equipment on the roof to allow for PV array, or something?
Would it apply to renovations, or just to?
If it's over, I'm just thinking 2,000 square feet, well, if, if the, if the.
So if the Calvin came in for an addition, 2,000 square feet or more. They, this would apply to the addition.
Only to the new portion, anyway. So we wouldn't be, like, undermining old buildings throughout town.
That's what I'm just thinking, it would turn into this giant thing, right. I, I'm, I like the intent, I'm just trying to think if there's a Pandora's box in there somewhere. But, I mean, this is a recommendation for more discussion to the council, so I say yay.
I agree.
Agree.
Yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to recommend modifications to ordinance 350 11-6F.
As stated.
As constructed, right.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, definitions. So I'll add an order. Yes, so definition to large-scale ground-mounted. So this is really just to add clarification that a large-scale ground-mounted system, if it's not otherwise classified as such, that it would be considered or classified as a private utility substation or similar facility. So there are, like, in the general industrial and some of the other districts, we don't spell out, we spell out private utilities and, as a use category. And so this would just say, you know, if we don't specifically say large-scale ground-mounted, that it would fall under that classification.
And the, and the size, kind of, kind of like the other one ensured that it was smaller, this would ensure, like, hey, this is a big thing.
It's what, yeah, it's energy production.
You're this big, right, you're producing, right. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Motion to recommend amendment to ordinance 350 2.1, as drafted.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
Okay, now I got to try to get this.
Discussion of possible minor map change to, on North King Street.
Let's do the, no, let's open space, plan to kick off discussion.
I thought we were going to wait, make Wayne wait as long as possible. While we're pulling something up, yeah, approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from May 25th and June 8th.
Second, A and, all in favor? That was, that's a different A and R than the one we did?
Um, yeah, I don't have it, so.
That one's off the list.
Yeah.
Um, oh, great, okay.
So am I up?
Um, just one more.
Okay. So, I'm not sure how many of you, I guess a couple of you may have been here seven years ago. Just want to talk quickly about the open space and recreation plan. So every seven years, we do an open space and recreation plan. It's not required by law per se, but it's a requirement for getting state grants for open space and recreation. So, and this is actually our most profitable plan that we do. In the seven years since we've had it, my rough count is we brought about $3.2 million from grants that wouldn't have been eligible otherwise, $8,000 for Plaskett Park, $400,000 for Florence Fields, about a million and a half for open space, and some smaller projects along the bike path extension leads. So it's a really important process for us. And, so we're required, again, where this is an open space and recreation plan, because we've spent so much time in the bike path extensions, the rail trails, we've brought the rail trails into this process, so we call it open space recreation and multi-use trail plan, if we're doing it. And so what I want to do is just walk you through the plan quickly, so you sort of know where it is, and know how we're planning to do our revision process. So, the plan was adopted in March of 2018, which means it expires this coming March. We don't really have the bandwidth to do two big planning processes at the same time, so it's our intention to start revising the plan this September, hoping that you all can revise it, that you can adopt it in early 2018, because we're then going to be starting a revision to a sustainable Northampton plan. And we just, we want to finish this plan before we do that. So, just quickly to go through, I can go through some main points in a few seconds, but the plan is a thick document, it's available online, we can send you the link if you want it. But most of the plan, no one's going to care about, and no one's going to change. So literally half the plan is the inventory of all the open space that we have. We're required to this format, it's our sort of institutional memory of City Hall burns down, we still know the 20% of the city that we, we own is conservation land, all that stuff is documented. The, the goals and objectives in the plan, which you would think is the most important part of the plan, we, is really not what we're revising, because the way we make this plan talk to sustainable Northampton, is we copied wholesale all the goals from sustainable Northampton into the open space plan. Whenever you revise sustainable Northampton, we go back and recopy those goals. And then, again, as a state format, we have some inventory information, some mapping information, some ecological information, none of which has a lot of discretion involved. So there's really just one chat, out of this big, I guess eight-chapter document, there's really just one chapter that's the important one I want to talk about. And that's sort of our action plan. So, we, the plan, seven years ago, we identified 13 actions. And then those are the things which we'll be revising in the process. So what I'd like to do, if I can have a few minutes of your time, is just sort of walk quickly what those 13 items were seven years ago, what we think we've accomplished of those items, and then what, only at the staff level, so it hasn't gone before boards, it hasn't gone to the public, what our brainstorming is about what we think some new actions might be for the next seven years. Because we keep the plan sort of practically up to date, following it, it's actually, it's not, can be, like, unlike sustainable Northampton, where lots of things could change, I don't think it's going to be a radical change in this process. The other complication you can see in this slide is, this plan has been approved by eight different boards. And so, we, we're sort of doing this process, so right now, we're doing a roadshow now with Conscom earlier tonight, Conservation Commission earlier tonight, be meeting with Recreation Commission early in September. We want to go to all our sort of, our sponsors of the plan, get their input, go through the planning process, then come back and hope that you're all going to adopt the plan. But obviously, it means understanding your concerns and your priorities early is really useful, because I, I'd hate to come before you and ask you to adopt it, and then have, you know, you make changes that the Conservation Commission hates, or that somebody else hates, so I'd keep in bet. That said, of those eight boards, there's really four that are critical. So you're charged with state law with adopting comprehensive and study plans. So we think, even though it's actually not quite clear in the state statute, that you're the most important body for adopting this plan. That said, because it's about conservation and recreation, the plan's totally worthless if Conscom doesn't like it, Recreation Commission doesn't like it, and because everything that's funded by city council is worthless if they don't do it. Early on in my career, this is 20, 30 years ago, I worked for a town in Eastermass who shall not be named, where the selectman hired me to write an open space plan for them. And so I come in, and I kick off this big meeting, and it turns out that they didn't tell the Conservation Commission or the Recreation Commission, and the planning board and zoning board are in court against each other and not talking to each other. So it was sort of a, so we don't do that here.
And just tell us who it is.
I know, I know.
All right, so let me just walk through those 13 things quickly for the process. If I can make this advance. All right, so, I went too far, sorry. All right, so the 13 things, and I'm not going to go through all these points, I can go, you know, in whatever detail you want, but, so, of the 13 things, one big thing is conservation management. When we did the plan seven years ago, we decided that actually was one of our big weaknesses. We've done a lot about buying land, and I started about managing it. Since then, we've done a lot of work, we've done a lot of invasive controls, although invasives are not necessar, it may still be a weak point in the process. The mayor authorized us, doesn't like me.
It's changed on this, but not on that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But do, just keep flipping, there you go.
Better make up buy it. All right, so, the mayor last year authorized us to hire a halftime position to help with managing conservation land, bike paths, and a few other projects. And so we've started makeup for some of our backlog of things, but we want to continue to do it. So, we've, this is a list of things that we've done, the last slide is the list of things that we did. This is what staff has identified and moving forward. So again, we want to continue all those things. Accessibility, for people with disabilities, is probably been one of our weaker areas, so we're trying to make more accessibility improvements for conservation areas. One of the big things we're trying to do is look at opportunities for mini community gardens. You're going to see this in some other slides as well. The city now has two big community gardens, 400 plots at Burksburg Road, and 400 plots at Florence Fields. We think that's enough for people who are driving and need to do community gardening. We're really looking at community garden plots that might serve low-income neighborhoods. So, the one we've been working on is River Run, where a large percentage of people don't have cars, and the fact we have 800 plots two miles away might as well be miles away. So we're looking at those things. So those kinds of things, we're going forward. Hunting may be the most controversial part of the process, and you don't have to deal with that, but trying to make sure that we, most of the land is pristine, but trying to think about how do we serve different recreation.
Oh, you've got to tell me what a Jeep Eater is.
So, we purchased a piece of property that had a history for decades, I'm not sure how long, of Jeeps going up this property, and it was nicknamed Jeep Eater, because your Jeep would get.
Stuck.
Beaten up. Well, it was pure rock, it was like really steep. And in, and very few cities allow Jeeps in conservation land, but this one trail is almost pure rock. So it's, so it's actually been great. We've worked well with these Jeep users, and say, "As long as you stay on the rock and self-pleasing." They've been great, they cleaned out three truckloads of trash this year. And so, again, this is fits with the hunting. We don't want hunting in most conservation areas, we like to have three spots. We don't want off-road vehicle, you know, we, we have several thousand acres of land, and we think having a lot of trails is a reasonable amount for doing it. So it fits in that piece of, something for everyone, although most of it's not pristine. The last one is, in the Salma Hills, which is one of my favorite areas, we have two, two user groups, both of whom I love. One is of walkers, and one is of mountain bikers, and they have totally different visions. And you talk them individually, they're great, so we just need to do a little better job on working with that. That's what a joke can do. So that's the first piece. The second one is, we buy land, we buy pristine land. We set a metrics seven years ago of 25% of the city being pristine. That's not, that's not forever, that was during the seven-year plan. We had some good press, but the press was a little bit confused. We just hit 25% of the city is open space, as a goal. We started, when I started here, we started 5%, so we've been moving forward a little over a percent, a half percent per year. But it's 20, it's actually 20% of the city is kept as pristine. This includes recreation, includes look park. So, we're 25% city, but 20% pristine. And so one of the things we just need to do, this comes up before council regularly, is just think about what are we trying to get? You know, at some point, do we stop buying land, what is our goal that's out there? Our goal so far has been, we buy land to increase it, because we haven't met our goal, but, and you saw this all with Burt Spog that you approved, we're trying to create enough building lots in parallel that we're not artificially inflating the price of land. So we, we've actually created more lots in some ways in the market, right? You have a piece of land that in theory could hold 100 lots, but in practice, no one's ever done it. And then we carve out, as you approved, 12 lots, and they're, they're 12 real lots as opposed to 12 theoretical lots. So, we think we're doing that, but we still want to preserve more. And then if, we're trying to preserve pristine land, which is the big important thing, we also want land in people's backyards. So we have the Jeep Eater Trail, which frankly is not about pristine land, but it still serves an important use. We have a tiny conservation on Montview Avenue. Ecologically, not the most important thing, but the neighborhood loves it, it's sort of like a neighborhood park. And so, thinking about that, we've been playing with, what is our goal? That we want to have some kind of open space within, maybe it's a 10-minute walk, we don't quite have a great number of all neighborhoods in town. So you shouldn't, in the evening, when you come home, not have to get in your car to go walk somewhere. So how do we do that? If you choose to live in a really rural place, which is fine, we're not going to have a conservation area around every single lot, but if you live in a neighborhood that's dense enough, maybe you have sidewalks, then we should be doing it. So trying to think about how do we serve that purpose. And that was incidentally new, we added that, I think about 10 years ago, and we've had a lot of success in that area. Then you just had a conversation in terms of PV, about how do we preserve farmland? We've had a lot of efforts, a lot of successes. We partially fund, about half-funded, Grow Food Northampton, their purchase of the land on, off Meadow Street. We purchased about 75 acres of development rights in the meadows. So we're trying to do more of that. And so trying to move forward in that process. Farmland without farmers, though, is pretty worthless. And so one of the things we know is, for many years, for decades, we were losing farmers in Northampton. That's no longer true. We're not actually growing a number of farmers in the last decade, but that's because we have a lot of sort of 30-something people who are starting tiny little farms. But we're still losing big production farms, right? So somebody has 150 acres, and they go out, and four guys buy 20 acres, and we're still losing some, some numbers. And so we're playing with more of this, this is still an area that we're weakest with. We've been working with our ag commission, trying to think about what is it that it takes to keep farming alive? So that's the whole debate. You're seeing the next slide, that's actually one of the points we had here, is explore PV for supplemental income without losing farming. And that's, that's a real important balancing act for us for doing that. And so trying to think about these things going forward. The other controversy here is about no-till. So the last plan, the Sustainable Northampton Plan, says how do we reduce chemical use? That's really important. But, many agriculture practices that are, that don't have any chemical use, turn over the soil to control the weeds, and actually creates a lot of erosion. So there's some, there's called no-till agriculture, where you're using some herbicides instead of turning over the soil. And so, I, I don't, I don't want to say chemicals are great, but erosion's not great either, and so we need to find the right balance, and not have a simple solution, no chemicals, no, you know, whatever it is. And so, trying to do a little bit more on that. For Conservation Commission, for example, we own land on the Kinnick River that we lease to a farmer. We've made that organic, because it's right on the river, and we don't want chemicals to leach it. On Sylvester Road, we own some farmland that's farmed by one of the last remaining dairy farmers in this part of Hampshire County, and he doesn't have an organic piece. And so it's really important to us to allow him to continue to use that land, that this 10 acres is a key part of his silage. Recreation acquisition, we've been really active in the last seven years. We bought two parcels of Sheldon Field, and obviously of the Florence Recreation Fields. We had, and the Kinnick River Greenway Park, so three big recreation projects. We haven't yet had our meeting with Recreation Commission, but my own assessments, we're probably mostly done with recreation purchase, with some exceptions. At Sheldon Field, we have sort of a, parcels with some gaps in them, some infills, since we want to fill those infills. We have some areas where the bike paths in town, we just have easements, and that means it's hard for us to get grant funding, so we may want to convert those to ownership. And then again, this environmental justice, these are neighborhoods that are majority, they're low-income or minority, trying to think about those opportunities, because, you know, if you want to play soccer or baseball, and you have a car, we got great opportunities now. But we don't necessarily have all culturally appropriate sports, we don't necessarily have them in walking distance for all neighborhoods, so trying to think about those things as well. And then recreation development, this is probably not so much things that you care about, but things like, we've done Florence Recreation Fields and Kinnick River Greenway. We know we have some fields that are getting sort of tired. Sheldon Field and Arcane, Sheldon Field and Mains Field, being the most notable ones. Mains Field is a big challenge, because it's, the river keeps, every big storm, the river wants to take it back. And so trying to think about those things going forward. We're mostly done with Kinnick River Greenway, but Northampton Community Row have put in essence a temporary boathouse there, it's probably good for a decade, which we're three years into, but they want to think, you know, it's a lot to get there, think about what's the permanent solution that's out there. We had, because the Kinnick River Greenway was so important seven years ago, we had that as a goal. We think we've now achieved it. We have, you know, a loader up there now doing the final cleanup, but that project is 99% done, except for a permanent boathouse. So that one will be dropped on the next plan. So that one will be dropped on the next plan. Okay. Doesn't like me. I can walk you through. Okay. Is it still up there in yours?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll, I'll keep going. So the next one on the list is Recreation Maintenance. That's again, not so much your area, minor, but I think symbolic important. We want to change from Recreation Maintenance to Recreation Management. We thought of maintenance as fixing broken things, and we want to think a little more about what's the vision for some of these areas. It's not, you know, there's some areas where the line, you know, recreation's one area and conservation's another area, but there's some overlap. Both agencies could be doing those exercise stations, I don't know what they're called, but you know, along bike paths where you have
Park, like a park horse?
Yeah, exactly. And both agencies could be doing community gardens. So we want to think more about that and that process. Again, they're dealing with the same debate about herbicides that's out there. I think we're pretty clear about insecticides. We're not using insecticides, but it's the herbicides is where there's more controversy. The next area is multi-use trail development, and that's certainly where we've been very active in the last seven years. Obviously, it's just before seven years that we added almost ten miles of rail trails. But in the last seven years, we've still done, we've done the Jackson Street off-ramp. We have, you know, a million and a half dollar tunnel that opens up another month from now. We bought some land for trail. We, we basically have done the easier trails along the railroad right away. We're working on a cross-country trail, the Burt's Court property you just approved will be part of that, that will go from Route Ten all the way almost to Ryan Road School. We just extended the trail in Leeds, a third of a mile last year, and we've applied for new grants to let us extend it up to the town line. And we're looking at how can we do a trail along the Connecticut River? So the state, when they redo Damon Road, is going to be adding a mixed-use trail from Bridge Street up to River Run. We want to see it can be extended up to Elm Court and Hatfield. So, you know, lots of those things going forward. And then our newest one, which we identified seven years ago, but really just started two years ago, was the Pavement for Parks Program. So we now have three pavement for parks that we've completed. So Amber Lane, privately developed on city property with our approval. That's sort of the new coffee shop. The movable parklet in front of City Hall, and then the brand-new parklet on the corner of Hockman and Pleasant Street that we just completed as part of the Pleasant Street project. We're going to council on Thursday for a parklet about fifty feet behind you guys over there, behind the Roundhouse Building. So the Roundhouse developers will pay for it, and I'm sure they're going to be ninety percent of the usage. But if you want a quiet place, you'd be allowed to go down there. And so we want to sort of keep extending that.
So that's a Northampton, that's a city program that property owners apply to? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, it was a goal in the open space plan.
Yeah.
And we want to work with people. So we've had, we've set up a process. Depends what people want. We will sign as lease property that we can take back.
Yeah.
More often, someone's making, it's technically a donation to us. So both Amber Lane and the Roundhouse, they didn't want to be stuck with a liability problem. So they're making improvements. They get to design it, but we get to approve, to approve it.
Right.
And we squeezed another goal. So Amber Lane was totally labor of love for the coffee shop. They did all that. But we had one condition, which is they had to overdig about eight inches and fill it with gravel and then put their blocks on top, so it's a little bit of urban drainage that water goes in for doing. The one on Pleasant Street, which we completed, was all city-designed. We're about, we took over Pleasant Street from Holyoke to Hockman. We're about to take it over from Hockman all the way down to the Roundabout or all the way down to the Dyke, and then we're doing another parklet right there. So sort of extending those things. And it's looking at unused asphalt that's not really needed.
So if a private property owner has underutilized asphalt, they may want to convert into something they can contact the city.
That's right. Right. And we're playing with, so far, it's been sort of more open space. But just an example, I had dinner tonight at the Mexican restaurant on Main Street, and they've slow, they got permission for some of the parking lot, but frankly, they've taken over a little more of the parking lot than they should. I'm sorry, take over some of the sidewalk. And now it, the sidewalk here doesn't meet ADA standards. So to go by the area they've taken over, you have to go into the brick pavers. It's uneven, it's not great, you know? My ninety-two-year-old mother could not walk by that right now. So that's, it could be a perfect place for a parklet in the street. I love sidewalk cafes. We really want to encourage them, but I don't want people in a wheelchair not to be able to go by them. So, you know, we're playing with those kinds of things. And that actually might have more overlap with a lot of your non-open space activities here. And then the
What's the Cracker Barrel?
So Cracker Barrel is a little controversial.
Sorry, I know it's ten fifteen.
That's fine. So we raised funding towards it. Thank you, you were part of our contribution. And we've heard two concerns. Somebody who owns property down the end of Cracker Barrel Alley, who's very concerned about losing vehicle access to there, and then some of the butters who are worried about sound. So we've slowed it down a little bit, want to move forward in the design a little bit more. Other butters have been very supportive. We've had some, a couple butters who are incredibly excited about the project. We had a meeting last December, APE, sort of trying to get the butters through, and just said, okay, we'll put it on hold while we sort of move forward. But we have this cash, we have to do something with. I think there's a solution out there. Again, this could be some opposition for doing it. So the next one, if this advances, is, is on your screen, advance? The next one is heritage landscapes. This is just a fancy term for, for years, we bought conservation land only focused on, on values as open space, pristine ecological values, recreation land. More recently, we've been thinking about the lands telling a story. We've been trying to document the oral histories. You know, we bought one piece of land where somebody had a story about, somebody built a house for his young bride, and then she died very shortly afterwards, and he, I think he drunk himself to death, but he basically walked away. And it's sort of a, in an odd sense, a romantic story. And
Two people died, and there's no house.
We, we Let's commemorate that. We bought the property, and there are two houses on the property, both falling apart. There was no, no chance we could have restored them. And so as a condition of purchasing, we made the seller tear them down. But our historical commission said, can you leave the foundation in place, sort of as a memory, as a marker for what it is? And so we ended up leaving the foundations in place, cut off a grade, but you can just see it. There's an old sawmill, portable sawmill, the trees have grown around, we left in place, and a farm implement in the woods. Even, you can't imagine this as farming land, right? The trees are big, but there's a farm. So we've been trying to think about that a little bit more. We have one in particular, we just started on, it shows up in both, what we're trying to do here and the next slide of what we will be doing. We have an option to purchase a piece of property where Galena was mined. Galena is lead. So this goes back two-hundred-and-fifty years, when people needed their own muskets, right? The way, you know, and, and Galena went out of business when people started mining higher quality lead in the Midwest. And so instead of doing it in your backyard, you got it out there. So we have these two-hundred-and-fifty-year-old mine shafts. Has some kind of very high concentrations of lead. We have to work with Department of Environmental Protection on dealing with this. But it's a nice story. You go through this, this, these pits that go down, the deepest one is about fourteen feet, but it's like pure cliff, I mean, not far cliff. But it's, it's, you know, Northampton sent sort of a spectacular site. And that fits the sort of story we're trying to sell about preserving these heritage landscapes. We have a, we have a program in Northampton where senior, low-income seniors can work off up to a thousand dollars of their property taxes. And we have a woman who's doing that, who's helping us put together some of these oral histories. So we hired Lori Sanders a couple years ago to do an ecological history of all our conservation areas. This is sort of the companion piece for, for doing that.
So you're putting our seniors in, in lead mines?
This is library research, they're not going to the field. I will say for the lead mines, the, we're getting the land inexpensively because it couldn't be developed, but the test is basically, is this safe for, for a child up to age fourteen to live on the property? Where you might be eating and hanging on the soil. And it's not. For you to walk on, we're going to put up some signs, but for an adult who's not planning to eat the soil, don't eat the soil. It's, you know, it's pretty low risk. And then the final one, if it ever shows up, is doing community outreach. How do we get the message out for these things? So improving public awareness. And we've done a series of things. We redid our sign, we used to do signs that are big, gaudy, pressure-treated signs would say, you know, conservation area, city of Northampton. And we've changed first to Epe, which is this wonderful wood that never breaks down except for it comes from Brazil. And now we're playing with Black Locust, which is a local wood. And we're making smaller, more subtle signs with nicer graphics. We're doing inserts for graphics, so the signs are half the size they used to be, but hopefully long-lasting. So playing with others, we've just redone, this is the old kiosk. We've done all the kiosks along the bike path with a newer material, which is more durable, more graffiti-resistant, I think more attractive. And just sort of generally doing that. Our website, which is great in many areas, is not particularly good with information about open space, and so that's the next thing to work on. So that's sort of what we think we're doing, but again, as I said, although the next steps, the eighteen to twenty-five are just staff recommendations. The process for taking this on the road is we're meeting with as many of those committees up front as we can, trying to get input. We then would do a series of public forums. We actually think we learned our lesson seventy years ago. We don't want to do, it doesn't matter now. We don't want to do too many public forums, because one of the things we realized is when we hold five public forums, there's some people who will come to all five, and they think that their vote then counts five times as much as
Yeah.
So we want to try to do a good targeted outreach, but not overdo the process. So we're thinking about two things. One is, one of the big, in some ways, the big picture for rail trails, where we extend them. We already know that's, we've done through lots of other plans. What we don't know is, there's a lot of places along both rail trails, but particularly the Mass Central, basically between Stop &amp; Shop and Leeds, with the streets that come twenty, thirty, fifty feet from the trail. And there's like neighborhood cut-throughs, and they're all opportunities to connect, but some neighbors will want them and some won't. So we're going to do a walking tour, where we walk and schedule every fifteen minutes we stop at the next street to get input on that. We're going to do a public forum early in the process, basically a workshop with no agenda beyond this, to get people's thoughts. And then they end the process, we'll come back and say, how do we do, you know, what do you think about this process? And then come back to all the boards for adopting.
And this process is a six-month process? You want to be out of this by March of next year?
Yeah, but my goal is for the staff level to be done by the calendar year, just because going, scheduling time in eight boards
Right.
takes a while. And, and again, we're not, the next cycle for applying for grants isn't until June, so technically, I don't really need to do it by March. But I can't really, I'm not bright enough to do two projects at once. So I want to finish this so we can kick off the other process for doing it. So I guess the biggest, I have two questions for you all. One is any offhand, any comments, I certainly want. But the second is what role do you want to play? I'm happy for you to be as involved or as uninvolved as you want. We've done this various ways in the past. Sometimes we did a committee from every board, but it never really worked because everyone felt like they had to go back to their full board. Sometimes we just come in regularly and update you. You know, again, whatever, whatever way you want to be involved, as, I just don't want you to feel, I don't want to come before you in January and you say, what are you talking about? You know, and start over again.
I can't remember, when I was here last time we did this, but did we have joint hearings? Or like
Didn't do joint, well, we did a couple joint, we did public hearings, we invited all the boards. And I don't think we had a quorum of any board, but a few members for each board came. So generally, those processes, and again, I can look this up. Once, we did a committee from members from each board. I don't, I can't remember, seven years ago or twelve years ago, but it just, it wasn't a great success.
I'm just wondering if it's a slow, the next four months, whatever, if we have a slow, slow meeting, then you could have ConsCom and Planning Board. It seems like the Rec Department, ConsCom, and Planning Board, those are the three that need to have some interaction. So like you say, you don't go through your stuff and we're, we're not involved, and then it comes to us and says, well, this doesn't make sense.
Right.
So, and the only way to avoid that is to have some interaction along the way. And to be most efficient, it would seem like either a joint public hearing or
That's, that's absolutely fine. The other thing we can do is, I think, and certainly after the first public forum, we can identify the hot-button issues. And then, you know, I know that for ConsCom, hunting would be a hot-button issue. That may be something you guys don't care about. I think herbicide use for both ConsCom and Recreation is a hot-button issue. Again, that may be something you don't care about. Parklets, I don't think ConsCom or Recreation care about, and I suspect you all do. So it may be that even though there's a lot of boards, that there's less overlap. I don't know, I may could be wrong about
So if, if you maybe did the, the first, or started to do that walkthrough, identified at staff level, the talking points, brought that to us, and we said, of those eight, I'm not really interested in six of them, but those two we'd like to be involved in, and then wherever that goes, you know, at that point.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we can't help you with anything we don't know about. And we can't be good advocates or, or informed. So, I mean, I think that's a good, because, yeah, there's going to be things that are going to be in our purview, and there's going to be others that we're, like, that's not really our thing.
Right, right.
I think that's a, that's a periodic update conversation, whatever you want to call it, I think would be, you know, would be helpful.
Okay, sounds great.
Seniors in the lead mines, especially, I'd like to be a part of.
Have anybody in particular in mind?
He's moved on from trees to
Yeah, I know. Well, rock hounds like it, because I, I'm not a rock person. There's some pretty cool crystalline structure in there. I couldn't tell you what it is. One of my neighbor's geologist, and his eyes lit up when we went out there, whatever that's worth.
Are you going to compare it to Julie Nixon bunker? You know, Julie Nixon, you know, there's a, oh, one of the biggest nuclear bunkers is in Northampton still, because Julie Nixon went to Smith. We started reading about this during the recent North Korea news items. Yeah.
On Smith campus?
No, it's, I, my husband was just talking about it. It's, I'm really bad about North, I mean, so it's like north and like, in like a more rural place, like on the outskirts of town, but it's
Did I Google it?
deepest bunkers. It's, yeah, there's some Google-able information about it. Yeah, it's one of the deepest bunkers in America.
Okay.
Which is wild.
We'll move our office there.
I thought Dick Cheney had a bigger
Maybe, it's, I said one of the, but yeah, it was like a big deal, and like, because, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to talk about the minor
Yeah.
map change?
Map change.
On King Street, North King Street.
I have, I printed out copies, double-sided. Is that enough?[1593.33] Is that enough? Everybody have?
Yeah.
Yep. So, if you can start on this, hey, this side, this is way up on the Northampton border, not way up, but it's on the Northampton border with Hatfield, Route 5. There's some parcels that are split, zoning is split, and the jurisdiction is split between Hatfield and Northampton. And so, if you, the zoom in on the back shows the parcels in particular. As you go into North, as you go into Hatfield, on the west side, well, on both sides, it's becomes commercial there, right at the Hatfield line. And Northampton zoning up until Hatfield, right along the road edge, is highway business. So, that red line on the lower part of that photo is the front edge of the highway business district. And this is the Northampton boundary, that's why this line looks so funny, is everything on this side is Hatfield, everything over here is Northampton, and there's this strip along here that's highway business, and then the front is some kind of commercial district in Hatfield, whatever their commercial designation is. And then back here is Water Supply Protection and Rural Residential behind the-
Below the blue line?
Below the blue line is Rural Residential, and west of here is, is Water Supply Protection. And this, and if you don't know it, this becomes really ledgy, and there's water, there's a lot of drainage coming off of this hill. It's up over Coles Metal Hill, Coles-
Oh, right.
So, the idea here is that there's these commercial properties that actually straddle the Hatfield-Northampton line. And in one, one in particular, which is generating this discussion about whether we should maybe do a minor expansion of highway business, is that this diable manufacturing company wants to expand, but once they start expanding, it'll be in Northampton jurisdiction and its residential zoning.
This is, you're talking about the purple-
With a purple triangle?
Yeah.
This is, that building is a commercial industrial use.
Right.
So, the idea is, in order to allow them to expand their building, to extend the highway business zone so that they could meet the standards for, you know, they would be in a commercial zone. And there isn't really, this is backland for that property, it's not going to be developed from the Northampton side at all. In fact, it backs up to the property that the city just acquired for open space.